Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone tonight to Planning and Zoning Meeting. First of all, we'd like to excuse Jesse Carden, who is not able to be with us tonight. He had a conflict of stuff going on tonight, so he won't be here, and I'll be conducting the meeting. We're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have asked Commissioner Warnock to lead us in that pledge.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, we'd like to have a motion on our meetings from our minutes from the last meeting held on March 2nd. I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, we'll go on then.
Mr. Menonall?
Yes.
May I jump in right now?
Absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt right off the bat. I'm feeling a little bit embarrassed. I should, I'm afraid. I forgot to get something on the agenda, something that we've been looking forward to having a presentation on for a few weeks. I think we're all queued up and ready to go. One way I describe this is that, as I understand it, they're going to be talking about one of the bigger differences between Utah County and Salt Lake County. And with that, you guys want to come on up, just jump right in? We have a couple of students from BYU with us. I'll let them introduce themselves. We also have a representative from Mountain Association of Governments with us here tonight. If you have any questions, I'm sure they're all ready and anxious to jump right in, so I'm not missing anything.
No, that's great, thank you.
Okay, all yours.
Yeah, so I'm Laura and this is Daniel, and we're BYU students, and we're working on a project with the Mountain Land Association of Governments to present and distribute the regional highway grid study that they recently completed. So we've been going around to different cities in Utah County and talking about the study and its implications for the specific cities and how they might be able to use it as a guide in their future individual planning.
Basically, we'd like to just educate you guys on what Mountain Land Association of Governments was able to accomplish and their findings, present you what they came up with, and hopefully get a cooperative effort from all the cities so we could all plan for the future, since we expect Utah County to double in population even without people coming in from other states, just from a bunch of families here in Utah. So if we could just hit the next slide. Like we discussed earlier, about four years ago, MAG met with all the cities and already discussed that we wanted to look into this. And four years ago is when MAG began to do their research and began to work on this ideal grid for their system. And now with about 90% completion, we're presenting it now so we could get the final touches from help from the cities. Next slide.
So in the email that included this presentation, there's a link to a website, but I'll have this video.
We can't get the video?
Oh, perfect. There you go. You're ready?
It's a short three-minute video, and it'll explain everything that we're going to discuss in three minutes, and then we'll be able to quickly go through the rest right after that. Is there a volume?
It's just play a Dave Matthews song in your head as you watch.
You said this is on the website?
Yes, connectingutahroads.com.
We can get a link to that on our website and send it to the commission, so.
It's a great video worth watching.
Yeah, we might be able to go back to that.
Yeah, we could probably just go to the presentation video in better detail ourselves. We could skip the video.
Yeah, let's just go back.
So there should be another slide after this one?
After this one?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. So if we'd been able to watch the video, you would have seen them describe an ideal grid situation. And this is what we've, planners have determined to be one of the best ways to have transportation connectivity. And the ideal situation has a collector every half-mile, which is smaller, and moves local traffic in between residential areas; an arterial every mile, which moves traffic from local roads to freeways or in-between urban centers; and then finally, freeways every five miles, which is for longer distance uninterrupted travel connecting the regions rather than individual communities or within a community together. And the idea behind this is that a grid system, as has been implemented in Salt Lake City, allows for more connectivity and other benefits that we'll discuss later on. In the next slide. So what MAG has done is, in the left corner, the smaller picture, is what that ideal system of arterials, collectors, and freeways would look if we just simply overlaid it over Utah County. And the other bigger map is what MAG has done trying to figure out logistically where we could actually implement those changes to create the grid system. Obviously, this would depend on local cities. This is not something that MAG would have the authority to implement, but this is like, if we were to have an ideal situation and account for the geography of Utah Valley, this is what we would be moving towards. And this is the model that is on the website, and we're going to play around with and discuss the benefits of.
Yes.
Oh, my side.
The grid system gives us plenty of benefits, and these are the four main benefits, that it provides more mobility, it increases transportation choice instead of just a single-use vehicle, we could use more transit, you could use your bike, or you could walk to more locations essentially. It will improve the economy because with better mobility and more accessibility, we could have more access to stores and other things that will improve the economy. And ultimately, with a well-defined system where all the cities are on the same page, it will provide safety for the pedestrians and the civilians. So if we could go to the next slide as well. This kind of just bullet points why the mobility will be improved, and as you can see, like more walkable environments, it'll be faster, lower impact, and all those good things. The next slide, please. And this is an example of the grid system on the right versus a system that isn't following a grid, but more so just a system that was in place such as what we may have now. Because if you want to go from the top-left to the bottom-right, you'd have to leave the whole screen and go out to another side, but in the grid, you could just follow the road and just take it down. Ultimately, the grid system, as we said, it's not perfect because geography and we already have existing layouts. So MAG did the best it could, which is why we want support and ideas from, in this case, Spanish Fork, what we could do for Spanish Fork, and what, just work cooperatively and on the same page. And next slide, please.
Yeah, so if we could go over to the website again, maybe we weren't on the website before, but if we just go to connectingutahroads.org, this is a screenshot, connectingutahroads.com, thank you. This is a screenshot of a tool that we have on there, and so it has the map that we showed previously with considering the geography and trying to implement a grid system, it would look like the map that's in the tool. And you can go through, and it has different options for you can look at increased mobility, increased economic opportunity. Oh, perfect. So if we go to the mapping tool, and then click on the link that says Grid Network Mapping Tool. Oh, never mind, scroll down. Thank you. Yeah, so if we, for example, went over to the Safety section on the left-hand side, and we selected like any, like maybe if we could just zoom in on Spanish Fork, and we could click on, I think that's going to be a fire station right there? Yeah, perfect. So now it's calculating for us, within a response time of five minutes, how many locations the fire department can reach with the current road system, and how many locations the fire team could reach with an improved ideal grid scenario. And you can see that there's a 33.5% increase in access, and those five minutes, being able to reach a house that's on the outskirts in those five minutes could be crucial for the safety of citizens. And you can see other statistics that demonstrate how the access is increased and how the overall safety of the city is increased. And if we, just to show one more tool, went over to Mobility Commute, and then we were able, sorry? Yeah, and then just click anywhere in the Spanish Fork. Yeah, exactly. So this will calculate, if this is your commute, you're going from this address to this place of work. It shows you how much time you're saving every week in your commute, the percent decrease in time, and the annual savings. So we encourage you guys to play around on this website on your own and use this tool, but it demonstrates with the ideas that MAG is presenting how it can actually truly benefit the lives of all the residents of Spanish Fork.
This tool, again, it's focused on the year 2050 because it's a Horizon year, but we're projecting for our tool, for the benefits of this. So it's inevitable that we're going to have to improve the roads, whether it be maintaining them or just redesigning them. So I'm assuming the cities have their own plans and ideas of what they'd like for their roads, MAG has theirs. And do you have any questions regarding this project that we worked on, and our supervisor? Could help answer your questions as well?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Well done. I just wanted to give a local example. One of the points you made were local roads should be for local trips.
Yeah.
I like to dine at Strap Tank in Springville, but I live in Spanish Fork, but I get on I-15 because we don't have a proper grid system connecting Spanish Fork and Springville. While there's some twisty turning back roads I can take, there's not a proper grid system, and I shouldn't be using I-15 for that local trip. Great job, you guys.
Thank you.
Have you found cities or traffic engineers at cities, or even cities' master transportation plans are contrary to this? Because your conclusions are great.
No.
Does anyone challenge the assumptions that you're making? Because that's where I would know that your data entry people on this website are getting it right. I mean, unless I go out with a fire truck and test if I could get there within five minutes, I just have to take your word for it. Have you found any pushback from city traffic engineers on this? Because the assumption is it's going to be great, because you're going to have more connectivity and things will be faster, but I'm just curious.
So I'm Shawn Elliott, I'm the new director. Anyway, so we modeled the transportation network in the valley, worked with the cities, we used your transportation plans. What this study is looking at is, do we have the proper regional spacing of these corridors? And in part of the study, we looked at the history of Utah Valley, how most of our cities grew sort of militarily outward, and a lot of those connections between the cities didn't occur. You know, Spanish Fork is, how would you put it, not problem child, but a lot of, you have Main Street, right?
Yeah, and Michelle's right. Like what she said resonates with me as well.
Right. And so some examples to the long-range planning process is we've worked with Spanish Fork to try to get other, more south corridors and even the interchange with Center Street and so forth on the maps, on the plans. And so what this is showing is the benefits of having that greater connectivity. You know, showing a line just from one half of Spanish Fork to the other is probably not going to show you much of that difference. It's those regional trips that we're really looking at. These are all suggestions, that the proposed grid map is the starting point of the discussion. It's not, okay, MAG says you're going to put these roads in your plan, right? There are some roads, there are some connections that will be hard, and probably will not occur.
Like the two across Utah Lake?
Right, at least one of them, right? Yeah, that's a 50/50, you figure out who you talk to. But as a freeway system in an urban area that's over a million-plus people, getting that extra connection over to the other side of the lake does wonders for our I-15, right? And so that's part of the discussion. And so, you know, if there's a project that you see on the proposed grid that you say, make it happen, we're not tearing homes out, we're not doing this, is there another way to make it happen? That's what we want to do, is have the discussion with that. The website is 90% done, there's a few tweaks they're working on, but we would like to come back later in the year, or when you start your general planning process, to be able to work with you on that.
So my comment is, thank you for taking the time, because a lot of those suggestions, I feel like, are just common sense, great suggestions, and if someone doesn't take the time to present it and help influence the cities as needed, then we may or may not get it, so thank you.
My question.
How was that influence story, Shawn?
Oh, no big.
How do you influence, like, Michelle's example, you have Springville and Spanish Fork that need to cooperate in getting that system in, how does MAG facilitate that?
Oh, wow, so 25 cities, we have to try to coordinate and talk.
It's like herding cats, yeah.
Some of them, yes. And so Springville is a great example, they're 1200 west, we showed that, the fact that we have a choke point, we call it choke point, but the Provo Bay area, there's limited transportation connections. And as this area grows, that becomes more choke point congestion. So 12th West was a project that we got Spanish Fork and Springville to connect into your Canyon.
Creek.
Canyon Creek Road. I go there every day, you know? To make that connection, Springville is now making that a larger road. In fact, I don't know if you know it very well, but they've got power lines that go down the side of it, they've now moved those to the middle of the road to make it a much wider arterial. Because of that regional nature, we're still working on Provo, and how do we make that connection into Provo, but, you know, that we'll continue to work on. So, you know, yeah, there are areas that, what we're trying to do is get the cities to think regionally also.
Right.
A lot of times you develop your plans and you think of what's going on in the city. You know, I think a great example in Spanish Fork is the Spanish Fork Parkway. It's a great tail route for a city, but it's not a big regional connection. And so that's what we're trying to get that conversation.
That's great.
Yeah, there's one more piece that needs to connect on that.
Yeah, and we funded it, I think.
I really like that MAG takes the lead on these plans, because without the plans, you know, we just address things after they've happened. So it's nice to have someone leading. I'll ask one question, and that is, is that once you have the plan and it's time to implement it, does MAG help with the funding of the projects?
MAG distributes about $50 million a year in transportation funds. Spanish Fork's been a large recipient, but that money, we first started, MAG 25 years ago now, there was a special funding account for Spanish Fork, it never got touched. And then as we started growing, suddenly we started applying, and so North Main Street widened that to what it is. And, you know, a lot of other projects that you would, you know, notice, the 800 East, 804th intersection that just got redone, that was in MAG.
Where does MAG get its funding?
So we get about $10 million a year from the federal funds, transportation funds. We get about $25 million a year from Utah County's transportation sales tax, 4% sales tax. And we get, part of our federal funds, we exchange with the state, and they give us state funding, which new cities love, because you don't have to have all the federal strings that are tied to the federal money. So, yeah, that's where we're going to fund it. The county funds is a big portion of that.
Great.
So when you come give a presentation like this, what is your major, what do you major in at BYU, if you want to do something cool like this?
I'm actually a bit of a wuss. I'm a Middle Studies and Arabic major at BYU.
Totally fits.
Holy smoke!
So is this for, this is a class?
This is for urban transportation planning, yes.
Urban, yes.
And I'm a civil engineer, so.
Okay.
I graduated from.
Congratulations. Yours makes a little more sense. That's great. Okay, so my next question is for Dave, though, and that's, so a developer approaches the city, and there must be a city roads master plan, so the development committee looks at the city roads master plan and MAG recommendations together when a developer comes with their, how does that?
MAG's regional transportation plan fits perfectly with our transportation master plan. It's relatively easy coordination at this point, we've been through a really long time. So to get to the point where you're talking about, when somebody comes in and says, hey, what would it take to develop a particular piece of property, one of the many things that gets looked at is our plan for future transportation facilities, whether it's a road or a trail, and developers are required to incorporate those in their project designs. We have a couple of different funding sources that we can use, if justified, to help pay for some of those improvements, depending on exactly what it is and how large it is, and that kind of a thing. But one of the things that we do before projects get to you is to make sure that those development plans contain everything that's part of the city's anticipated need when we're eventually built out.
And then someone came to the city council meeting and did a presentation not too long ago about a study or something about alleviating congestion on Main Street, was that a MAG? Is that MAG?
In a really broad sense, so yes, that happened, and practically speaking, the best solution is to create more of a functional grid beyond just at the local street level in the community. So looking at, for example, 30 East, and trying to get more people to use 30 East instead of Main Street, and other right routes like that, just to disperse traffic, which is one of the most effective ways that a well-connected grid system moves people better. Less traffic at the local level on local streets, just essentially by way of dispersing it. So that's a real succinct way of speaking what that project was about, with the understanding that, given all the growth that's happening in Salem, south of Salem, the room yet that there is to grow there, even if we don't issue any more building permits in Spanish Fork, traffic on Main Street is going to continue to be an issue. It's going to get to be a bigger and bigger issue. And there's some other anticipated big improvements that we think will come along with Mountain Lands' help, ultimately as well, just to give motorists more options and disperse that traffic and that kind of a thing. Does that help?
Mm-hmm, yes, thank you. I like your grid because the top-left one looked like a quilt, and I'm a quilter. It was pretty.
It's pretty.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move forward with number five on our agenda tonight, a conditional use permit involving the Solid Waste District and their transfer center. And, where'd Dave go?
Stepped into the hall, there he is.
Dave?
Hey, I want to be really brief on this.
Brandon here this week.
The project that we'll talk about here, with a proposed conditional use request, was conceived originally several years ago. In fact, just a couple of years ago, there was considerable discussion when the city council ultimately approved a couple of changes to the city's zoning road to expressly allow this particular use as a conditional use in the public facility site. The site that we'll talk about tonight, then, subsequent to that, had this own change to public facilities, which set everything up for this conversation about actually improving the use, everything related to the use in terms of all the improvements that would be made, their operations plan, and that sort of a thing. As a condition of use, you as a language authority don't have the ability per se to say no to it, but you do have the ability to impose reasonable conditions to as much as possible eliminate or mitigate any anticipated adverse impact that the use might have on anybody in the community. So that's really what the conversation is about tonight. Also with that, a public hearing will be held, but please be mindful of things as the applicants present here at the moment, many ways that you maybe think the proposal could be improved. Just by way of the nature of a facility like this, which as I see it, is really just a place where people, institutions, municipalities take household garbage, other forms of garbage, for it to be stored, sorted, and typically for a very short period of time, kept on-site, with the idea that, under most conditions throughout a particular week, the garbage is packaged and shipped to a landfill well west of Spanish Fork. Kind of a processing facility is how I look at it for garbage. Spanish Fork City is a member of a district. That district is the applicant for the proposal tonight. As a member city, we've been involved at the board level in terms of making decisions relative to this particular proposal. I understand the city's very supportive of the idea that the district would have this opportunity to build a state-of-the-art facility in Spanish Fork, which, if it ultimately happens, would replace their existing facility in Springville. I don't want to go too much farther than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but I believe the applicant's had a very detailed presentation that is best for them to make. I will mention that the developer and new committee has recommended not this be approved based on the findings that we have in the staff report in terms of those conditions.
Very good. Any questions for Dave before we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, thanks.
Let's hear from the applicant, and looking forward to your presentation.
All right. Nick Patterson, Forestry Associates. It's been a few years since Ben here, and we'll talk about that. I need to excuse Terry Ficklin, for those of you that know me, he's the general manager for the South Utah Valley Solid Waste District. I'm the program manager, I'm a project engineer with, a program manager for the project, and have been since 2014, so we've come a long way to this day. So I'm going to make the work a little bit on the slideshow, because there's lots of things happening. So, all right, let's start. So I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Dave said. I want to give you a little background on the district, for those of you that aren't fully aware of what they are. They obviously have a transportation in Springville. Go ahead. They started in '89 with Bayview Landfill, and then with the transportation, had green waste, different things happening. Became the district in '91, where the member city's essentially from Provo to Woodland Hills, to Salem, and everything in between, those are all part of the district. Goshens in there because they are close to the landfill, and so they can direct haul there. Serves a pretty big population. Last year's tonnage was 201,000, and when we were here just a couple of years ago, that was about 180. So huge increases in waste these last few years, and continuing. I mean, everyone's seeing lots of population growth, right? So existing transportation size for about 400 tons per day.
So, uh, existing transportation size for about four hundred tons per day. And right now, they're averaging six hundred and twenty-five and last year seeing peaks up in the twelve hundred range. Uh, it hasn't even, we haven't even started spring cleanup and are already getting near a thousand tons per day. So, very undersized. Go ahead. Those of you that have been there, uh, have seen this before, right? Open-air facility, undersized, lot of stuff happening outside. We all know that's not the greatest look, right? Things can blow around. Go ahead. Um, one thing that is good about the existing facility though is that they do use side-load compacters, which is unique. Side-loads are not widely used. Top-load compacters are used, but allows them, um, to, to consistently carry forty tons out to Bayview landfill, which is thirty-three miles out to the other side of the lake. So, these new, these compacters will also be in the new facility. Just allows, uh, the district's, uh, has some requirements to not have long double trailers going down Highway Six and so to maximize their capacity, they use, they use compacters instead of a top-load facility. Go ahead. Okay, I'm gonna give you a little history. It's, we've come a long ways since this started in two thousand and five. So, and I, and I skipped that particular slide, but two thousand and five, they bought a property out by SuMaw Property out to the west, um, looking at potentially moving the facility out there. Uh, that didn't pan out, so ultimately in two thousand and fourteen, they put an offer on this Swenson property, and went through, went through some different geotext, some environmental side analysis, different things, uh, and, and then came to Planning Commission to, to approve a proposal for, for a zone change. Um, that was, seems like a long time ago, but that's really when we really started this process. So, like I said, October twenty-fourteen. Um, the, the, the map you see here is actually a little, a population centroid map that shows that the existing facility when Provo built it in Springville was actually, I don't know if they had the foresight to, no, but it really is in the centroid. So trying to keep the facility somewhat in the centroid of the population for the district is, is very helpful so that, uh, curbside collecting trucks kinda all go, you know, have the same distance to go. So ultimately, that was not, uh, recommended for approval. And you know, I, I don't know that we were totally ready to deliver the message in two thousand and fourteen. There was a lot of, we, we had the idea of what we want this facility to be, but really didn't deliver that all that well. So, so we kinda went back to the drawing board, so. The other thing that was, was a problem is that the, the facility was in Casa Lot. District didn't, wasn't really financially ready for that as well, so, so they actually sold Bayview landfill to North Point, who is the north Utah County Tran, uh, Solid Waste District, and actually Trans Jordan as well, who's the south Salt Lake County Solid Waste District. And then one other district up in, uh, up in, uh, Leighton bought into the landfill as well. And selling that, becoming a partial owner kinda helped start the process of building funds for this new facility. But we still had to find a location, right? So, good. Ultimately, they pulled the offer on the Swenson property and thought, okay, we're gonna rebuild on the existing, uh, Springville lot. There was some land there. Started those, started kinda working through some, uh, some, go ahead, some, uh, different conceptual site plans. Didn't really go that, that far. It was prime commercial real estate, um, so the district had a good asset, both with Bayview and with the property they had, to help kinda build some funds for a new facility. So, so we decided to look somewhere else, right? So, we landed on what the district ultimately ended up buying. Um, like Dave said, we, we came, two thousand and seventeen, the district started some due diligence on this parcel just off Main Street, uh, just north of the jail. Property looked pretty good. There was about six acres of wetlands that we had to deal with, but you know, you can build on wetlands, you just have to mitigate them properly. Uh, so they, so we went through the process. Go ahead. Like, we're, at some point, we're gonna get to a transportation in two thousand and twenty-three, right? We're already way oversized. That was ultimately, uh, in November, that was actually continued. Again, we were, we were close, right? We, we had a vision of what it was gonna be, but we, we needed to take people to see what these new facilities look like cause we knew what the existing facility was, right? Right? We knew this. This was, this was in everybody's mind. This is what is coming to the backyard in Spanish Fork, just three-quarters of a mile down the road, so. So we took a trip, we took several trips actually, go ahead. Um, to see what these, these newer types of transport stations looked like. Um, these are all up in the, uh, Pacific Northwest, California, um, fully enclosed. I mean, you, you really don't even know that they're a transport station when you pull in, besides going across the scale. I mean, you see some garbage trucks coming in and out. Go ahead, one more. Uh, and, and the best thing that we found as we, as we talked with neighboring property owners is that they even said that it, they don't, they don't notice that it's a transport station. Um, you got multimillion-dollar homes right next to these places. That one's right on the bay in, in Seattle. And, and I love this picture. While we were there, this mom's sitting there with her kids, allowing them to learn, okay, what's happening out here, right? They can see everything that's happening in the transfer station and we can educate how to be better about disposing of our garbage. So, that was between November and ultimately coming back into December of two thousand and eighteen, uh, that we were approved for a condition, well, public facility zone for that side of the property. And, and the Spanish Fork Council approved it to, to rezone it. So at that point, it was time to start designing this thing and making sure that all the discussions that had during these different meetings, um, were included in this new facility. So, yes, we approved it, right? Okay. Um, so the, what the new transportation is and how we've included the different components that were discussed. Uh, throughout all the various discussions that were had, these were really the key items that wanted, that we needed to include in the design. Six Hundred West Road, interesting, we just talked about the MAG stuff, right? Ninety-five-foot wide commercial collector roads out into this area, right? That we, this is a highly developable area, so Six Hundred West completed, add the commercial traffic off of Six Hundred West, um, add landscaping cameras. High-speed roll-up doors were something that was, that was seen at these other facilities, uh, really helps to keep everything indoors. Um, I mean, they, they're, they're up and down in a matter of seconds. Negative pressures, misting system control orders is a big issue. And then obviously the education room and then covering loads was a, was a thing as well. So I'm gonna tell you how each one of those have been addressed now with this facility. Okay, so, uh, the design of the, of the roads, um, and, and a big piece of that was actually the Spanish Fork Regional Lift Sewer Lift Station on the north end of town. You know, that's SR seventy-seven there, right? Ninety-five-foot wide collector roads, uh, both Six Hundred West, Thirty-four Fifty North. Those were designed, uh, and, and the, the lift station was designed and they were actually approved in August. Uh, and construction has actually already been, has already started. So if you, if you've been out in that area, you'll, you'll see a lot of construction happening, right? So here's just a couple of photos. That's the sewer, the lift station, that's just last week. And they're expecting to start getting pumps on site, um, so a lot of utility, uh, utility work, roads, uh, important stuff for this end of, end of Spanish Fork. Okay, so what about the entrances? Uh, when we, when we showed the proposal back in two thousand and seventeen, this layout had our entrances coming in and off of Thirty-four Fifty North. The thought was, that's gonna push too many people down Main Street, right? We need to, we need to focus on Six Hundred West. And so, so we really went back to the drawing board and actually came up with four different entrances instead of just two, uh, which not only help, helps with safety, uh, but, uh, much more efficient to have the public in and out of their own area. The commercial, all your curbside collection trucks come in and out of their own side with their own scales. No interaction with the public. And then the hauling side, which we call the backyard for the district, is, um, their double trailers kinda just come and go without, uh, interacting with the public. Whereas right now, they all come across the same scales. Um, so it can be very lengthy waits, um, and, and just, it, it's just not good to have those, those, you know, intermingled with each other, so. So we changed the layout and added four entrances instead of two. So hopefully this plays. It just kinda gives you a quick little illustration of how the traffic comes in and out of the facility. You can try and see. It plays on mine. I don't know if it would.
So anyways, what you're seeing there is that all your collection vehicles, uh, coming onto Six Hundred West. Only, uh, I think an important thing to point out here is as well as that there'll be signage, you know, on Main Street, out on SR seventy-seven for, to, to direct people, uh, early on to, to get to that back, that back entrance road. Especially when it comes to the curbside collection and the hauling vehicles. I mean, the district can really kinda say, hey, this is the way you need to go. Which makes sense too. That's why we put the, that's why we put the entrances on that side. Okay, next one. All right, um, fence, uh, precast concrete fence on top of a two-foot berm around the entire site, uh, using the Spanish Fork City standard type of, uh, precast fence. Something you would see along all your streets. It'll be wrapped around the entire facility, uh, with gates at each of those four entrances. Cameras kind of dispersed throughout at all the entrances. Cameras on the scale house, that's a covered scale house with, with four, uh, with four scales. Cameras to kinda see, uh, people's, uh, license plates, things like that. So, lots of, lots of cameras in there. I guess the one other thing I'll point out right here as well that we're, um, we're adding a pretty sophisticated, uh, fire suppression system into this facility. Uh, they'll actually use, uh, FLIR cameras to identify hotspots in the waste and then they'll, they'll be cannons that like direct to those spots and so, uh, fully maintained inside the facility, so.
So the, so the commercial entrance is along Six Hundred West and the public entrance is that Thirty-four Fifty North?
Thirty-four Fifty, yeah.
Is that road existing right now?
Nope. This is all new, so they've, this one's, mm, they've constructed most of the utilities on Thirty-four Fifty, or on Six Hundred West and then Thirty-four Fifty, most of the utilities are constructed up to Dry Creek. And they, we, hopefully the council approved the permit last night to do the, uh, the culvert over Dry Creek so that that road will continue up to Main Street. Okay, um, let's see. So the other things, high-speed roll-up doors, right? Negative pressure, odor and dust control. These are four high-speed roll-up doors. Um, they can go, uh, about six to eight seconds per, per time up and down. So, you know, someone comes off this, public comes off the scale and as soon as they leave that scale, that's open and ready for them to come in. Um, and as they exit, um, it'll also do the same, just up quick and then back down. Uh, misting system, uh, or the negative, negative pressure, that's, uh, that's based on the HVAC system. All the, everything's located on the roof and there's louvers all around the building, so anytime those doors open, it just whoosh, pulls everything in and up and out. A misting control system, I'll show you a picture of that here in a second, but, uh, really that just is a real fine mist, um, from, uh, from pipes and nozzles on the roof or on the, that's on the structure and, uh, it just, it doesn't make anything wet. Um, it just kinda helps mitigate any odors by using enzymes and stuff, so that's where that system will be located. Go ahead. So this is an example of what that looks like and what we saw at one of the facilities up in the northwest. Just, it, it's interesting, was interesting standing there. It was like, I don't know, they use a scent that was like flowers, but, and that's what you could smell instead of garbage, so it was pretty cool. Okay, next. And this just shows, um, that's where that misting, misting system will be. This is actually the operations nest where they can control the misting system as they see piles and stuff building up. This is actually a very unique design to this facility. They've done them in China, but nowhere in the United States, so it's pretty cool. And then the pipes and nozzles will be mounted on these roof, uh, roof structure. Okay? And then the, uh, looking out into the facility, this is the education room. It's quite large, but the district doesn't have a place to hold board meetings or anything right now. They hold them, technical meetings are held here, board meetings are at Springville City Hall, so this will allow us to be able to house all that stuff here. And then, um, we're actually working with a consultant right now to develop all the education stuff for this room. Um, so you can see out into the transfer station tipping floor. You can actually see behind the tipping wall, which will allow you to see how we process like white goods, fridges, uh, tires, uh, metals, uh, things like that. What you aren't seeing in this rendering is back behind this door is a whole, uh, uh, wall of windows as well that look down into the household hazardous waste building to be able to see how that's processed.
In the equilibrium, the separation, but now you have to drop off your metal, your, there it is. Tires are in place, will, will be all dropped off here and then separated? Or do you have to, will there be separate locations for that?
Nope. So everybody comes into the transfer station and then it's processed by the operators and taken behind the wall. There'll be bins and stuff kinda located here to drop off. Same with the household hazardous waste. Um, we want everyone to allow the, the district to, to handle that material. You just need to drop it off and they'll handle it in the facility.
Can you explain what a tipping floor is?
That's just the name of, you know, it's, I don't know why they call it that cause it makes you think like you're tipping, right? Um, it's just, that's what they call the, the, the floor where you're actually tipping and dropping your waste.
Oh, gotcha.
Tipping the, the collection trucks are tipping up and they're dropping their waste on the floor.
Oh, gotcha.
Um, in this facility, um, all that wall, you can see there's a push wall, has steel plating around the entire bottom six feet of it. Loaders then push that waste into, if you remember the picture of the, the compacters, it's pushed into the, the wall into the compactor and then those form a bale.
Are they side-loading compacters like the, like the current ones?
Yep, same ones. So we're, there'll be two new ones and then one of them is being reused from the existing facility. It'll be, uh, dismantled and brought over here to be used actually as the recycling, uh, compactor now. Okay, next one. And then I think this is the last one, um, that talks about the, the conditions of the permit as far as penalties for covering loads, maintenance litter control plans. We, uh, this was submitted, I think it's one of the exhibits in your, uh, in your packet. That really details how the district plans to, uh, to pick up the roads, how they plan to, uh, you know, the hours of operation right now, they only, uh, charge four dollars, uh, uh, for an uncovered load and some people be like, oh, that's less than a tarp, right? The, the talk is right now that it's, we should take that to ten, which really actually falls in line with what, what other districts are doing. And, and I think it's important to know that that is a state law, right? And people can get, um, fined for not covering their loads. So, uh, you know, daily cleanup of the facility inside of that, uh, within the grounds and then cleaning up the floor, um, daily as well. And then weekly, they'll do some more detailed cleanup or as is needed, uh, as the situation's warrant. Okay?
Is that, is daily cleanup required at the current one?
So they, their conditional use permit requires that their tipping floor is empty each night.
Well, but I'm talking about the rest of the grounds, cause when I leave there, there's trash all over the grounds.
They, they just, they can't do it. They can't, they don't have the room, um, to be able to maintain and clean everything. Right? So all that stuff that you saw, what's, uh, the metals, the construction demolition, your white goods, all that stuff that you see at the existing facility, um, on what's called a Z-wall, kinda where the bins line up in a Z-form, that's what they call it, the Z-wall. That'll all be inside in this one, um, so, so yeah.
Will any be outside?
Yep.
Other than when it's in a vehicle being transported to or from?
That's correct, yep. So, uh, the, we've sized the building, it's a hundred and ten thousand square feet. The existing's about thirty, sized for twenty-two hundred per, tons per day peak. Um, as we went through the design process, the, the board's been very adamant about, this is our one time to do this right, let's not undersize it. So we've added extra capacity throughout the design. And we've also added five loading bays, which allow for those different things that are on the current Z-wall to be immediately loaded into the back of those trailers that are attached to the building. So everything stays inside.
So with that capacity, I mean, you guys forecast, is this good for fifty years, ten years?
Yes. So we originally, so the original design was for eighty thousand square feet, which was a twenty-five-year design. This is now a hundred and nine thousand square feet, so it's nearing forty years of capacity.
So, uh, I was fortunate enough to be, uh, on the trip up to the northwest where we saw these sites and I was really impressed. The one in Seattle, it was near the bay, had something that was unique and that was is the commercial trucks went through a tire wash as they came out because their garbage very often is wet and kinda slimy, so as they dump, they might get some of that onto their tires. And so I guess that, uh, the city or whoever it was didn't wanna see that come out onto the streets and so they actually pulled through that tire wash. Do we have anything designed for that in, in this particular case?
So we do not. Um, this, this, we're a much drier, um, uh, waste out here. We do not. Um this this we're much drier um uh waste out here. Um and as we spoke with people about those, they tend to be very problematic. Um a lot of times they're just down and they just ju- drive through a a bath of water and it's it's just dirty water a lot of times, right? So so ultimately, as we went through the design and had discussions with the technical committee and the board, that was actually taken out of the of the design.
I was really impressed with the facilities that we toured. Now, it looks like you've and you know, you've incorporated almost all of those things that we saw into this site. And I'd just like to add that uh originally, we didn't think we would have to go out of the state of Utah. We thought there might be one or two in Utah that we could go see. There wasn't anything. We had to go to Seattle to see this and uh I think everybody that went was really impressed. And I think the the district needs to be complimented in 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 there incorporating everything that's there or that we saw into this facility that'll make it a good facility for years to come.
Yeah, this is the first of its kind in this state.
Yeah.
And with the all the things, I mean, they're the only ones that use compacters in the state. Um but but the size and the complexity of it, i- it is the first one of its kind. I think that, so yeah, so just checkmark, right? We got all the things that were were up there and then the last thing, as you click through, it'll actually show what the ri- the site rendering looks like of the facility. So yep, so that's that's kind of shows what the entire enclosed facility. And you can kind of see where I have saying these are just backed right up. So uh household hazardous waste, administration building. What you're not seeing back here is a thirteen thousand square foot maintenance building. Um and then this is the public uh entrance only, commercial, commercial entrance on this side. And then in the back is where the the hauling vehicles come in and out of.
Do you forecast your prices changing from the old to the new?
No. I mean, there there the it's a board decision. But the 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 bonding that's happening, um i- it's being done without any increases at this point. Um there's thoughts to have small incremental, you know, incremental, small twenty-five, fifty cents, which you wouldn't even know really if that actually happened, but um yeah, at this point, no.
And you said that there will be a recycling element to?
Yeah, so so this this isn't a recycling facility. Um we're not processing recycling, but that the I don't know if it's a bin can down here for your recycling, your curbside recycling does come here. Um it's collected with those trucks and brought in to the facility and and it's not, it's not separated. It's just a single source. They bail it and they take it to the recycling facility.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant applicant? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Okay. Great.
What uh what teeth or what uh power does a city have if we notice, let's say, trash building up along Main Street, that north end of it, or along any of these roads to make sure the district is enforcing the operational plan and what they've outlined here tonight? If they're not complying somehow, what what power do we have to make that enforce that?
Yeah, enforcement um could be a challenge, of course. Ultimately, they could jeopardize their right to continue to use the property in accordance with the conditional use approval. Now, more realistically, I think in this case, um you'll notice that uh we've recommended that one of the conditions of approval be that the operations plan get reviewed annually. We don't entirely believe that we know yet exactly maybe where some problem spots might be if, for example, people that that have uncovered loads um going to the the center where there's maybe a propensity along a particular route to have garbage blow to or any any one of a number of different things that, in spite of, I think, really employing um everything that we know right now about what best practices would be for the construction and operation of a facility like this, we want to, we want to keep that opportunity open in the future to address something.
And that's what I think, too. I mean, we're the look, it's an impressive facility. It's just it's going from six hundred tons a day to eventually twenty-two and forty years. We don't, we don't know. And I want to make sure we have the flexibility to to make those adjustments. And then since the whole city of the client can be listened to and that those concerns
Right.
become ours to bear instead of, you know, pro- or sprinkles.
I think that's well said and I also think that that's one um one reason to um feel somewhat comfortable. And maybe it's naive to say that because we are a po- excuse me, a part owner, um we're one of the communities that's uh on the board, right? We're responsible for how it operates and that type of a thing. So having influence at that level, um I believe also will help ensure that it operates without impacting properties adversely.
The state will require like the long, a long-term store management plan or if it's in If it's a piece of qualifications, they'll have a a indefinite search as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions before we go into public hearing?
Point of clarification, it's not, it's not on the uh the Seattle Public Facility Transfer Station. It's not on the bay, it's on Lake Union. I'm I'm from Seattle, so that matters to me.
Very good. All I know is we went across a bridge.
That's right. There's a lot of bridges.
That's right. It was beautiful, though. It it was a nice facility. Uh with that, uh we'll go into public hearing at this time. And uh those who will participate, if you'll come forward and state your name and where you live, that'd be great. If there's a lot of participation, we would ask that we hold our comments to about three minutes each. And uh we'll go forward with that at the at this time. So we're now in public hearing.
Rex Larson, I have one question. Uh will there be accommodations made for used cows and livestock?
Used?
Used.
I like the term. Thanks, Rex. Okay, thank you for that question. Any others? Seeing no further comments, we'll go out of public hearing. Uh would like to answer the one question that was brought forward. Will there be any facilities that would allow for used animals, animals that have expired?
Well, they they come to the transfer station now.
Right. And we want to continue that.
I can't speak for the operations. I mean, I don't think they have any intention of changing how, what they accept at the existing facility will also be accepted here.
It's unlawful for us to bury the lost site, and so we need that.
That's never been discussed as coming out of the operations plan and they accept it now, so.
It is a legitimate question because we haven't had those facilities for the ranchers and farmers around the area. So that's that's a legitimate question. Any other questions or comments uh that we have from the commissioners or from staff? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'm a I'm I'll make the motion, uh chairman. I just wanted, before I do make the motion, I want to clarify that condition number four. It says, provided that all operating aspects of the facility are fully enclosed within a building and the grounds are completely fenced. I I want to make it clear that my motion uh means that operating aspects includes all trash of any kind whatsoever. So that's what that means to me and including their business operations. So any trash of any kind whatsoever will be enclosed within a building. And that's how I interpret that as part of this motion. So I move that the planning commission uh approves the conditional use permit for this applicant, subject to compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
A second.
Okay, we have a a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries and we look forward to the rapid completion of that project. It's going to be very good.
Groundbreaking is April twenty-eighth.
Will we be invited?
We will invite everybody.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is a zone change application and a preliminary plat for Modera. And uh Dave, would you please give us the lowdown on this particular item?
I'll give you the high-level lowdown and then we'll turn things over to the applicant. They have a presentation that I think's pretty detailed. I'll let them go through uh just that, the details of their proposal. Um as you said, there are two different parts to what's proposed tonight for a site that's located just north of the Revere Health Building, which is in Salem, just across the city boundary between Spanish Fork and Salem. Just over forty acres, um over six hundred homes would be uh built there if the project is approved and and somebody moves forward to build it. The proposal relative to the zoning, maybe to start with that, uh is consistent with the general plan. I know the applicant has an image that I think illustrates that well, so let them cover that. Um and really, that that's one of the fundamental things that staff focuses on when we're talking about land use is just consistency with the general plan, not to oversimplify it. But uh that's a big deal, certainly for staff. But then beyond that, um getting the details right. I think each of you are aware that relative to any kind of development of this this density, um there've only been two projects approved in Spanish Fork to date um of this nature. We have this this size, um or anything that even approaches this size with this number of uh homes. The particular zone, land use zone that would allow for it, the R-four zone, is relatively new, just a few years old at this point. And the development of that zone went hand in glove uh with the change that was made to the general plan six or seven years ago, when a couple of different things happened. We created um some new land use designations that required lower density development than what previously was called for. And on the other end of the spectrum, we created uh one particular land use designation that allowed for higher density development than what previously was allowed for the nuts and bolts of that. On the higher side of it was that previously uh there was nothing um greater than twelve homes per acre allowed in Spanish Fork. And the change in the general plan and the subsequent creation of the R-four zone uh took that change initially from twelve to eighteen, and since then, it's been increased from eighteen to twenty. A little bit more back on the particular um aspects of the preliminary plat. And this is going to be discussed quite a bit tonight, so I'll just be really try to be brief. What you'll see tonight is um the current of many different iterations that we've seen for the development of this property. This has been in the works for well over a year. And uh the applicant with their designs, I believe, has gotten very close at this point to um meeting every requirement that we have for the R-four zone. And beyond that, what I would say is even more important for us as staff um for a number of different reasons, is designing a development that we think will age well over time, that will create uh a neighborhood and not something that would feel like an institution or maybe more of a compound or that type of a thing. Which, as we um did homework with the planning commission, leading up to the creation of the R-four zone and uh it may sound like I'm exaggerating, but the commission at that time back, I can't remember if it was six years ago or seven years ago when we started on that, it took about eighteen months to create that zone and we visited the majority of the apartment complexes, large condominium developments, that type of thing in Utah County. It was five or six different field trips. Uh some of those took many hours. Uh planning commission really spent a lot of time to try to, first of all, see if there was a model out there that they felt comfortable with in Spanish Fork. The idea of having the kind of density that we're talking about here, uh it wasn't well received by everybody then relative to people that were on the commission and the city council. So uh certainly from my perspective, the bar was high uh as standards were developed and as particular provisions were put into place. Um like I said, to try to make sure that developments that follow those provisions are going to be an asset for the community. And I recognize that that, you know, it's kind of a subjective um idea as to, you know, whether or not something is beneficial or not. But um certainly, the development pattern that um the residential four zone requires, uh for example, for buildings to have frontage on public streets, to predominantly have parking tucked in behind buildings, uh to require a certain number of garages for a type of development that uh we found uh oftentimes in other cities to not do that, to have maybe carports or different things like that instead, along with requirements for what I think are as many uh different um amenities per resident of a development, as you likely would find, um articulated in any code in any any community in Utah County. I'm simply trying to say that I I really believe the bar was set high, not accidentally. And uh we think the applicant in this case is really close. Um I'd like to let him present uh tonight and then maybe I'll touch on a couple of things uh relative to um some modifications that, uh as we discussed it in the DRC meeting, DRC members seem to think uh were important in order to get us, you know, maybe from ninety percent there to a hundred percent there. Um particularly with the understanding that uh this site is on a really critical corridor for the city. We have big plans uh for this surrounding area. At least the the general plan suggests that um there will be pretty intense land uses there. And uh the idea with that is to hopefully take advantage of what's a really, really unique opportunity um that I'm aware of. There are not other interchanges on the Wasatch Front today that have undeveloped land all around them. And for a variety of reasons, uh some that might tie into that first presentation that you saw tonight, with big transportation corridors coming from the south and the kind of development that we anticipate uh in Spanish Fork, along with what's going on as well to the south, um the fact that we have run out of land in the vicinity of Canyon Creek for businesses that um absolutely want to be in Spanish Fork today. Uh the need to preserve the area around the interchange and to get it right in every way is a big deal. And the type of development that you'll talk more about tonight, the idea that that's what maybe flanks uh some pretty intense retail, land uses, maybe office uses and that type of a thing. Um generally speaking, I think that's that's a good pattern to follow. So, big picture, um again, I think it's easy to to see that the proposal conforms to the general plan. But in terms of the details, uh there might be a couple of things I'd like to to talk more about after the applicant presents. But with that said, I don't know if you have any questions for me before I let them go?
So you're going to address staff's concerns or red lines after the applicant?
I'd like to. I think they may have already addressed some of those, so just kind of
Great.
Follow the list.
Very good.
Okay, thanks.
So we'd like to hear from the applicant and have your presentation.
First off, it's, excuse me, it's good to see you again. Uh last time I was here was January, the first meeting in January. And we pre-presented a plan, got your feedback, and I hope that we have implemented everything that you've asked for. And again, it's been a great uh pleasure to work with staff. Dave has a wonderful love for Spanish Fork and he has really pushed us hard to make sure that this is done correctly. And that's the reason why it's taken a little bit longer for us to get here, but we believe that we've accomplished that goal. So with that, go ahead.
Could I have you state your name?
Oh, I Oh, I apologize, yes. My name is Garrett Seeley, representing the development.
Thank you.
Great. So what we'll do is we'll first start off with just an overview of where we're located. I think Dave gave you a good idea of that location. Next. Just a zoom in of that area. This is the Revere Health that he talked about, right here. Next. So this is the Spanish Fork plan that has been approved for this area. And our project sits more particularly right here. And the next slide, you'll actually see the overlay of where we actually land in that. So we have a commercial corner. This is the medium-density with the mixed-use, commercial, commercial going back this way.
Urban density.
Urban density, excuse me.
Not medium.
Correct. So you can kind of see how it overlays on that exhibit of how we're conforming to what we're provided. Next slide. This is just a 3D. This is Interstate 15 and the Benjamin exit, as they call it, and then a 3D layout of where this is going to be. Next slide. As you can see, not much has changed from the original layout that we showed you back in January. Some of the changes are, these buildings are larger. This has been squared up before. It was on an angle. I don't know if you recall that. So we squared it up and provided more parking in the amenity area to try to kind of keep it all together. Next slide. Just some more 3D renderings of what it will look like. Next. So, this building is a four-story building, and it's located furthest to the west, which is adjacent to what will be the more commercial corridor, if you will. And in planning, you try to do kind of a tiered system of more dense, less dense, less dense, as you go out from that district area. These buildings will actually be up against the commercial area, and we'll give a buffer to the next as you, as we walk along this, and you'll see. These buildings actually have been modified slightly. There are balconies that have been added to all of these, and I'll show you those because I know that was a hot topic last time, and I want to make sure that you, you understand what we're going. Next slide. Again, this is a street view of those types of buildings. Next slide, please. These buildings are the new buildings that will be on the east side. So we're going to try to separate those. They will, as a neighborhood, work together, but they're going to be two different distinct designs. These buildings will be all three-story. They all have balconies. There are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, as requested. We can continue to look at those. Next slide. We have the different colors that we talked about. Next slide. This is the clubhouse. Next slide has renderings of the clubhouse. Next slide, the amenity area. Again, we increased the parking lot in front of the amenity area. The clubhouse with pool, basketball court, pickleball court, and play area. Next slide. These are the renderings for the actual clubhouse.
You're going to call it something better than signage?
We actually like the name signage because you don't know what it is. Yes, we will. Next slide, please. Signage 2. And then another aerial view of the amenity, center, centralized amenity area. Next. Next, please. And next. These are amenity playgrounds, which you've already seen this one in the, in the large play area. But these are three different amenity playgrounds, and you'll see those on the next slide.
Garrett?
Yes, sir.
Go back to that slide.
Yep.
So you're saying four stories through this whole section?
This whole section right here will be four-story.
And are those...
And switching to three-story here.
And these are all three-story.
And, and in our last, in our last conversation, one section was going to be designed to be for rent and one is designed to be owner, owners?
That is correct, and that's still going to be...
Which is which?
This is going to be owner-occupied. These will be for rent. Owner-occupied, I'll get to that slide, but I'll tell you now, are going to be two and three-bedroom only. They will be offered on, on those. And then the for-rent will have one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Next slide. Again, you will see the, the amenity play areas that are going to be included. These are additional open space areas. Even though you'll see more coming in later, I want to, want to explain what they are, but just additional open space for, next slide, for catch or doing whatever soccer practice, whatever you want to do. Next slide. These are dog parks that will be included. Next slide, please. And you can kind of see how those will look. One of the conversations that we did have with DRC is perhaps taking out the grass on the interior of these because it seems that with dogs going back and forth a lot, that that gets worn out and doesn't look great to do it with some sort of wood chip or some other material that will be easier to maintain and keep clean.
Is it anticipated that the rental areas will allow pets?
Yes. Next slide. These are project entry monumentation. And the next slide you'll see is just a markup of what we plan on doing. So the brick will correspond with the colors of the brick that we have on the buildings. Each one of those will be placed. The difference that you see is this is more vertical. This has a little arch side. You can choose between the two, depending on where it's located, but these will be at each of those entrances with a nameplate on it. Next slide. So now we're talking about the four-story for-sale project. And these next few slides will show those and the floor plans that are available. This is what they'll look like. Wanted you to understand that we went back to the drawing board multiple times to make sure that we got everything that you asked for in these. And we added the balconies on the end, and in the middle, and on the end.
Elevator or no elevator?
These were no elevator on the four stories. No elevator.
Are, are there entrances in these areas to enter the building?
That's correct. So these are the stairwells that are hidden, and the front door is there, and there, and then on the opposite side as well. And then this is the back of the building with the garages that tuck up underneath.
And there's a garage for how, how many, for every how many units?
Here, there are, well, three, six. There's 12 garages here, and then there'll be an exterior building for additional garages to meet the code requirement.
And is it an option for people to, to pay for the garage?
It is. Yep. Next slide. These are more of a black and white, as you can tell. Again, the entrances are there. The stairwell is interior, hidden, but with light. Next slide. The floor plans. This is the bottom floor with the garages and the two-bedroom units that face out, and then you can see them as they go up. Three-bedrooms will usually be beyond the end. Two-bedrooms on the interior. Next slide. There's a 3D rendering of what they'll look like with the balconies included. Next slide. Next slide. This is the rendering for the clubhouse that will be in the for-sale section. So you can see that, and then we'll give you a 3D on the next slide of what we anticipate it looking like. So there's the 3D rendering with the front door. This will lead out to a pool that will connect on the backside of this.
So they're not share, they won't share facilities?
They will not share facilities. They'll be separated. And then there's the floor plan that go, corresponds with the building.
Nice.
Next slide. These are the three-story buildings. There's one, these are all the same except for this building right here is a little bit shorter to make sure that we hit the parking requirement. Next slide. These are 3D renderings, again, with balconies. Little bit more undulation, so they're not as flat. Remember, that was a dead topic of discussion, that we pushed things, recessed them, pulled them more out so that you don't get that flat front all the way across the front of that.
Are there middle entrances, like at the other buildings?
So these, the entrances for these buildings are on the end, on both sides. On the main floor, we will have walks to those balconies. We anticipate that those will be used for visitation and different things, so there will be a sidewalk with a sidewalk going to each one of those balconies.
What's the length of the building?
The length of the building?
Length, huh? I'm thinking, so I'm just doing the math on entrance-to-entrance length.
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out quickly. I can get that to you. Next slide. And what you'll see is, here's the door going in on both ends of the building, and then there's an indoor corridor that runs the entire length of the building. Okay?
Looks like it's really long to not have another entrance in the middle.
Not have a central entrance.
I don't know how far that is, but it looks like it's quite a hike.
Exercise is good. Next building, please.
So it's convenient?
We can address that, I'm pretty sure. Next slide, sorry. And next slide. I can't zoom in on that. My eyes aren't that good. I don't know if you can.
You did the math on the size of the garages? Smart way to do it.
234 feet? Yep.
Gotcha.
What's this, is this is a garage right here?
That is a garage, yep.
And then the front doors, the front doors are all in the, along this hall?
The interior hall.
Garage access is the...
That's correct.
The hallway.
Oh, gotcha.
And then, these are individual storage bins throughout, next to those garages.
And that's included on the upper floors as well?
Just on that main floor. And then, as you look, this, this sits above the garages as you go up. Any other questions?
So again, it looks like the three-bedroom apartments sit on the ends.
That's correct. And I'll give you a little data table real quick. Next slide, please. Again, these are just, this is the smaller building that I showed you at the first. It's a little bit different than the rest. Next slide. And then its floor plan as well. You've seen the clubhouse? Here's the actual footprint and design of that clubhouse. Next slide. So here's the density calculation that we discussed heavily last time as well. Total acreage is 37.34 acres. Total number of units that we have proposed here is 668, which is 17.89 units to the acre, which was down from the max of 20 units to the acre that we showed you before.
Did the unit sizes increase with the decrease in the overall units?
They did.
Their square, the square footage has increased?
They did, and are more diverse. Because we had to do some of those one-bedroom to make them all fit, that building, as you saw, actually grew width-wise, not length-wise, but width-wise.
Makes sense.
Okay? To make it all accommodate.
Gotcha. Do you have the average square footage?
I do.
For one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom?
Next slide, please. It's right here. So your one-bedroom, average square foot, or is 800? Two-bedroom? And three-bedroom?
Does that meet the R4 code, Garrett?
It does, because it's based on an average square foot per the project, and the average square foot needs to be at 900, and it's 961.
I believe, I'm kind of a geek. I might know the code in my head, kind of.
Yeah.
But I think the one-bedroom has a minimum average square footage, and same with the two and three, but you may hit, you may have hit it. Sure you have.
I believe I have. Our architect was very adamant. We made sure that he read that code more than once. The one thing we didn't add is the balcony square footage, which you can add to the overall square footage. We left that out, just as livable square footage.
Right. Thanks for having that handy.
Sure. And then you can kind of see, this was a discussion topic as well, is you can see 43% of this overall project is one-bedroom. So we went back, redid the numbers, looked at the demographic, and that's what we came up with. 45% two-bedroom and about 12% three-bedroom. And know that the for-sale side will kind of bring that average up for the two and three-bedroom as well, that you'll see in this area, but for the for-rent side, you'll see that. Next slide. Parking. This is the required parking number, 1670. We have 1,281 parking stalls, 390 garages. Total parking provided, 1671. Nah, we got really close, but we got it. It's not easy to do with the parking requirement that is the standard here. What we also did is we added, we did parallel parking along the streets just to see what the added benefit of those public streets were. And you're almost close to 300 units that you can park there as well.
Significant.
Which is great a lot of the time, except we have this pesky winter storm parking ordinance, so... But it's nice that most of the time you have a whole bunch of extra parking.
Correct. Next slide. Again, just more 3D renderings of what we anticipate this to look like. We're trying to implement some zero-scape to cut down on the watering and make sure that we're...
Was it part of your, your grand plan to show us an all-white, flat elevation and then come back with that? Because this is so much better. Was that intentional?
It was intentional. I think when I came to you before, remember I said, "This is whitewashed", and then I brought those color boards with me. And I said, "These are the colors that we have selected", and you said, "Great, go back and put the colors back on the building", because the white just doesn't cut it.
Dramatically, it's a dramatic improvement.
It looks superiorly, but I agree with you, better. And then, these are all redesigned with different undulation setbacks, roof lines, and different things as well. Next slide. Just, these are more just 3D renderings of what you'll be able to see as you drive down the streets. Next. Again, these are the four-story over on the west side.
I'm, I'm a little bit picky, but something about this still, I know this is the back of the building, but it still looks a, I, I appreciate that there's some texture and stuff.
If you, if you go back to slide, if you go back to the slide of the 3D rendering, it's going to be slide 30. I'll show you real quick. Right, keep going. I'm sorry. Keep going, right there. Oh, back up one.
Oh, that looks a little better.
There's the backside, so what we did is now we pushed that back.
That looks sweet. That looks better.
And so it gives you that depth and that relief that you were looking for.
Less barracks. Thank you.
Yep. And I believe that was it, if I'm not mistaken. There may be just a couple more. This is the clubhouse area for the for-sale with the pool. And I believe that's it. So one thing I do want to understand that, you know, this is going in, in a area that is currently farmland and has been farmland for many years. And I just want to reiterate that going around this, there, there will be a block wall that will carve out the corner. There'll be a block wall that'll be four feet high with a clear-view fence that's a wrought iron that's two feet, that sits on top of it, going across that along this main highway. There will be a block wall going along the back of this. And I want to know the farmers on the other side or anywhere else in this area, continue to do what they want to do. They can farm. We are not taking away that right. This is not imposing on... This is not imposing on their property. They can continue to do what they need to do.
You know you wouldn't have that right, even if you wanted to.
That's right.
You know you would not have.
I know that, but I just want to make sure that they're very well aware of that.
Gotcha.
One question, fences on the east and west, will they be the six-foot fences, or will they be four feet with?
I, I would prefer to do a four-foot with a clearview. I think it would match quite well with all this.
Do you have an exhibit of that, what it looked like?
I think it is, what we turned in.
Thought you had it.
Have you thought about changing the name, since it sounds so much like Moderna?
How can we get away with that? Are you kidding me?
Do people call it that?
This is when it's getting approved, this will be like living in infinity.
My arm hurts every time I think about it.
We could put Pfizer as a name.
We kept, we kept calling it the wrong thing.
Understandable.
Johnson, Johnson.
It's not in this, it's.
Actually, while you're here, are you, is this going to be a commercial corner? What is this?
This is a commercial corner, yes.
Do we know what, at this point?
At this point, we do not know.
The other corner as well?
Sure. This will be future commercial, yes.
Yes, okay.
And then, future commercial on the spec, as it goes, closer to the freeway.
Garrett, while you're here, what about phasing? How are you, are you, do you have a phasing plan broken out, or?
I do.
How are you?
Phase one, we'll do the improvements along twelve-hundred here. And then we'll bring in improvements around here, and get it to this point. And around there, and this. And everything south of this is phase one. Okay?
So your, so your pool and clubhouse are in phase one?
That's correct. Yep. The buildings here are going to be broken out in subfaces, like 1A, 1B, because of the landscape requirements, and if we finish them in the winter, we still want to get CFOs and move forward and post the bond, so that we can continue to, to progress as we go along. So, they're all broken out, 1B, C, D, E, F, all the way through.
So one, and then two will continue there?
Two will go to the north.
Go to the north.
And then three will be the for-sale, but the for-sale will come on as soon as we can get utilities to that point.
Okay.
That's kind of what they're holding on, because everything comes from this corner.
From start to finish, length of time? Groundbreak to done?
Groundbreak to done, twenty-four months.
Wow.
All phases.
It's ambitious.
All phases. It's very ambitious.
I like it.
Very needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Dave, do you have any, any questions at this time, before we go into public hearing? Anything you'd like to discuss?
Just maybe to get it out of the way now, if you don't mind?
Well, yeah. Yeah.
I really appreciate.
If it helps answer some questions, I think it's a good thing.
I think we need to go through the phasing plan in a lot more detail. We took maybe five minutes in the DRC meeting last week to talk about a couple of key issues.
Did you say five minutes?
On the phasing plan.
Okay.
Six minutes, maybe. One of our big concerns has to do with just getting people on and off of the state route safely. There's a signal here. There will be a signal here. The developer will have to construct that signal. And we just want to be very clear about exactly what can be occupied on the site before that's installed. In short, we most likely will require that that be operational before any certificates of occupancy are, are granted, at least for what's been described as the condominium side of the development, the for-sale product. Beyond that, it's a matter of making sure that, as buildings are built, appropriate amenities are constructed.
And parking.
And.
Each phase meets the part, meets the code.
So, that's going to take some time and effort, and yet, it's not rocket science, that we can get there, but. Adding detail to that. Because this, I said earlier, this would be the third, this would be the fourth, actually, R4 project that. Will have been approved in Spanish Fork, if that happens. And each one of those has kind of been a work in progress, as we've gotten to the point of having a public hearing with the planning commission, so the applicant hasn't yet done a final landscape plan. That's one thing that we would expect to see, as a condition of approval. A couple of other more detailed things. Projects like this have a high propensity for being sold from one developer to another. And being clear about absolutely every detail of what's being approved, so doing just a deep dive on building materials, making sure that when we see what we think is brick on an image, that indeed, that's documented someplace, down to every aspect of the construction of buildings, not our, but, just one of the things that.
Do you plan on covering that in condition number four? Development agreement?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to talk about that, maybe for a minute as well. Development review committee felt fairly strongly that a development agreement was the right way to go.
It seems right, when you mentioned a specific, when you get real specific like that, it seems like the right thing to do.
So that certainly would be one option, still, to have a development agreement, have everything spelled out there, exhibits and agreements, and move on if you have anything.
Development agreement if needed, I think the detail side of the plans can come back to. If the city's not getting anything from a development, knowing nothing in special dedications or anything like that, I don't see a development agreement as a, what we can.
I'm indifferent, for what it's worth, on that issue.
Okay. And so, just by way of somehow making sure that everybody understands exactly what's expected, period, and making sure we're detailed enough that we don't end up arguing in a year when an exterior going on a building and saying, "Wait a second." A couple of other things that I actually think are pretty important, I hope they don't seem petty. The applicant does need to construct some freestanding garages to meet the city's garage requirement. The architecture that they've provided for the garages, it's four-sided architecture, which means no side of the building is left less, interestingly designed than any other side, but yet, it has a hip roof, whereas the rest of the project either has flat roofs, or like a combination shed roof and gable roof, or something like that. I think that's what's, kind of in the design perspective, to make it fit a little bit better.
Very easy.
Yeah. And.
Those detached garages are here. Look here, and.
Here.
Or here?
Yep. We talked about these buildings here. I, I appreciate what the applicant's suggesting can be done with entrances to balconies, which is really a patio, right, ground level. But yet, at the same time, that means a whole lot of people on second and third floors potentially have a long ways to go, to get from a garage space or a parking space to and from their unit. And I think also, it, well, the lack of maybe having a mid-building or multiple mid-building entrances to units, kind of misses one of the things that we're trying to do, which is just create a better relationship with the public space along public streets, and that kind of thing. I appreciate that. And the last thing, just by way of clarification, public street here, public street here, and over here, the model that we're following with this, trying to follow, I think would suggest that you, you wouldn't have a wall, or even a fence along the street, unless you were worried about safety. And in the case of, you know, state route, the level of traffic, the speed of the traffic, different things like that, I, I think absolutely something is needed here, what the applicant's proposed, I think, is great. Not having a solid wall, again, kind of lends itself to having more of a compound, yeah, kind of a feel, or something like that.
What they propose is much better than that.
I, yeah, I completely agree with that, but we would not require a fence or a wall on those streets. Inasmuch as here, a street will be created where nothing exists today that I'm aware of, there would be a need to provide fencing, farm fencing, at least on the north side, of a fence, assuming that properties in the north are going to continue to be farmed. We would require a wall adjacent to a single-family use, I think, that's here, and like Mr. Suthi pointed out, walls are required between residential and commercial uses.
Right.
But just a couple maybe other things to touch on there, that we can, we can flesh that out more. I'm really comfortable with that at this point, but that's.
Is there a paved trail along there? Is that part of the city trail plan?
It is, yes.
And that'll be put in along by the developer?
Correct.
Dave, we have a deceleration lane, is that what's being shown here?
Yes.
And then a dedicated lane to merge?
Correct. With the idea that this becomes a limited movement intersection, at least as I understand it, that's where it goes.
So they're actually updated that, and you'll have an island in front of it, kind of working re-dig, lows, so that it's only a riding way out.
Right.
And it'll direct everybody to the roundabout, island or the roundabout road, they'll have a signal.
Will there be a specific thing in the owner, in the, the owner section of the HOA, that there's a percentage of the rentals? That can, a percentage of the units that can be rented?
For the for-sale?
Correct. Yeah, I think that's, that's important, if you buy, I mean, I know it's really popular right now for people to buy, to buy units like that, to make them into vacation rentals, or longer-term rentals, but if you're in an area that.
In January, then we would do that in the state.
Right. Because I, that, that'd be important to. Yeah. Yeah.
Who will review that? When will we see that, to make sure that's accomplished?
And we put, or can we put that in?
This would not come back to you, if you recommend that it be approved.
Right.
So how would, how would that number, is that going to be staff that's going to verify that number, how's?
That would be in the CCNRs.
Yep.
So that's, we would check it there, as a starting point, so if there was no other conversation about it tonight, the project that's being constructed next to the neighborhood of Walmart, they have a pretty high.
I think, isn't it forty percent?
I was thinking it was closer to sixty.
Yeah.
So you're going to, in order to get FHA financing, you have to have different person.
Say that again?
If you're going to get FHA financing on a project, you have to have fifty percent.
Oh, great, great.
Okay.
That's.
If you have.
Can we add that to the magic number? Conditions?
We'd love to hear that.
Like, yeah, it seems to me like fifty, like fifty or higher.
You tell us. I, we certainly appreciate the concept.
Right.
I think that makes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you still want condition number four? Or do you just want it there, and you can decide, staff could decide to revoke it?
It's the development agreement.
Oh, you don't have all the conditions memorized for every, every project that you present? At any given night?
Some nights I do better than others. That's the developer due committee's recommendation, so yes, that's what we're representing tonight.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable if you and Vaughn come up with something different, that you can just revoke it? I would want staff to have that.
I think the city council will.
Okay. Unless it was worded differently? With staff's discretion, that the applicant enters into a development agreement with the city, something like that? I don't know if that's a sticky point for us or not.
You certainly could, yeah. Make your recommendation, for sure.
Yeah.
Is that helpful? I mean, based on our conversation, it seems like it might be.
I think another sticking point is something that you said, Dave, for me, is those, is on those long buildings, it seems like you ought to have one to two middle entrances, and the shorter one to have at least, you know, at least one, just.
Mid-building.
For access, public access, if you're parked, anyway.
Given what the applicant has already done to modify plans, I don't, it's easy for me to say, I'm not the architect, I don't have to.
Right. Anyway.
Make a change, but that seems like, of everything that we're talking about, not.
I'm all for more steps, too, but it seems like a.
It seems long.
Yeah.
If you're in the middle.
It does, it seems long to me, but.
Is now a good time to ask staff questions, Chairman?
We're going to public hearing first.
Okay.
And get all of the questions that they have, and then we'll come back to staff.
States of comment.
And have those answered by staff. And then, any further questions and discussion, that may give us a better time to do that. So, this is a public hearing that we will engage in now, and we'll have the same kind of procedure that we had in the other one, that we would ask anyone who would like to, to come up, and give us any kind of, any kind of discussion that you'd like to give us, any kind of questions. But ask that you don't repeat the same questions as you go along, so that we don't waste everybody's time with the same thing, time after time. And if there is someone that can be a spokesman for your group, that can present a few more of the questions, with less people coming up, we'll give you a little bit more time. We'll, we'll set the time at three minutes per person that comes up. If, when you come up to address the council, please state your name and where you live, and that will help us understand where your questions and comments are coming from. And so with that, we'll go ahead, we'll go into public hearing, and ask anyone that would like to participate to come up and do so.
Again, my name is Rex Larson. I live in the thriving community of Leland, and I'm happy to do so. First, I want to thank each of you for your service. I know it's not easy to take time away from your families to, to be here and to do the things that you do, and I appreciate it. Very brief history of Leland. The community was organized a hundred and twenty-two years ago, April thirtieth of this month. And so, it was named after Leland Stanford, the man who founded Stanford University. So we do have a little history there, and, and we're proud of that. After, it was, originally was, was farmland, and about a hundred years ago, it was surveyed, and roads were laid out, drains were put in. An interesting thing that I might mention, when they put those drains in, in places, they had to bed the drains with wooden troughs, because of quicksand. So, consider that. Okay. The area is some of the best soil in, in the entire state of Utah. Crops that we have grown personally, lima beans, peas, corn, sugar beets, and alfalfa, and barley. And five years ago, we added a diff, an additional crop, and that's corn maize and pumpkins. We have Glenn raised corn maize just off of the exit down there. It's been a great opportunity for our family to come together and to provide a service for the community. We see this as a very possible detriment to that. We are very concerned. It was mentioned that farmers can keep doing what they're doing, but as you know, your garden doesn't grow very good in the shade, and if you've got four stories, those properties right next to it, production will be decreased. We would like to continue with our corn maize, and, and hope to continue to do so, but I'm very concerned that this may not be compatible. If this area, and I, I realize that it will continue to grow, but we need to do it responsibly. I appreciate the efforts that you're putting in to make sure that this is done right. As I see what's gone on over by pace, and that's not attractive to me at all. Those four-story apartments, and out in the middle of, of, of good pasture ground, just doesn't look right to me. As I mentioned, I'm, I'm the fifth generation, I don't know if I mentioned that, but I've got, my, my children and grandchildren are now involved in the corn maize, that's seven generations that have worked and farmed the same ground. Please don't take that away from us. Do what you do, but do it wisely, so that we can continue to do what we do. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rex.
Hi, my name is Nathan Burtzel. I'm also privileged to live in Leland. I haven't lived there quite as long as Rex. Has anyone? Maybe some people. I, I certainly have not. I, apparently, I need to talk to Rex about how to grow my grass a little bit better on some of the soil I have, but, anyway, I, I'd like to, I'm standing in opposition as well to the, the project proposed. I think Leland is a special place. We moved to Spanish Fork about fifteen years ago, and we're blessed and lucky to end up where we did. We live in estate homes that are not too far from the project. I appreciate Dave's comment earlier, that they look at the general plan, and the general plan is what really motivates and helps them make decisions, but the general plan is not binding. It is a suggestion, it's a plan, it's, it's ideas. And the problem that I have with the general plan in, is that it suggests zoning and densities, and then zonings and densities are changed. So for instance, again, Dave recited how the R4 zone and different zonings have changed, how they went from twelve units an acre to sixteen to twenty. And I don't think that those are necessarily reflected in the general plan. I'm now, next to my home, next to my home, there are townhomes going in, and townhomes are somehow considered medium density. That's what we're calling medium density now. I believe in open space, I think that's necessary and helpful. I think that's, that is really, when people think of Spanish Fork, when I think of Spanish Fork, that's what I think of, is beautiful, open spaces and opportunities to breathe. It's not Provo, it's not Lehigh. This is a project of unprecedented size and scope, and it doesn't fit our city, and it certainly doesn't fit this area. I appreciate the question, Ms. Warnock, about rentals and owners, and I appreciate the suggestion that CCNRs can be put in place that limit the, the owner's ability to rent. However, if anyone's been part of a HOA, they know that sometimes and oftentimes, CCNRs are more like suggestions than actual rules, because who's going to enforce it? It's going to be the neighbors, and who really wants to, to get up in their neighbor's business? And so I don't find those to be binding, and I've never found those to be very binding in any place. I hate the idea that garage is, is an optional, that it's a rent. I know how that's going to work out. For the most part, people are going to park on the street for free, because that's how we do it. That street parking, just like we, Canyon has turned into, outside of some of the high diven, density areas, or higher density areas up on Canyon, as you get towards the mouth of the canyon, a parking area is, is bad on the street, it's bad, and frankly, it's dangerous. And I fear that this will, can turn into that, that same sort of situation. I do not believe we have enough parking. I don't think our city code, frankly, and this isn't, this isn't against the project, I don't think our city code is adequate for the parking, for how we, how we like to do it in Spanish Fork, because there's lots of trucks, there's lots of trailers, there's lots of toys, and those end up going somewhere. Public clamor is a, is a, an adequate reason to deny a project. I'd like to invite the members of this board to look at the, the recent Facebook posting today and count and see how many of our citizens of Spanish Fork said, "This is not a good idea. This is not who we are as a city. This is not, this is not a, a good project. We don't like this." There's, there's ample public, public clamor against this project. I think we can do better. I think our city should, can do, can do better with the space that we have, it's limited. Just because an intersection isn't, is the only one on the Wasatch Front without something on all four sides, doesn't mean we need to fill it up right away. Let's find the right project, let's find the right development, and then let's make sure we, we, we allow property owners to use their property in ways that are consistent historically, without interrupting other usage around them and hurting their neighbors. Thank you.
My name's Clint Harris. I live down that street, Two Thousand West, I live up at the top of it, so. Couple of concerns I would like to express is, number one, Eight Thousand South is already a very interesting road to get off of. If you're making a left turn there, you're taking your life in your hands. I turn left onto that street all the time, so I would say, if this does go forward, that intersection definitely has to be widened and a turn lane put in there, or you're going to have somebody get killed. There's already been two accidents down there in the last few months that I'm aware of, so you can check your records on that, but there's been several accidents down there. The other thing to be aware of is that you've got a farmer who lives right at, right where that ends, and he's got corrals and everything right there, so you need to consider that because the smell and everything's going to be there. It's not like you can tell the cows not to smell, so that is...
Can you use your pointer? You were like, that and...
Right up here, there's, this is Ryan Creer, his farm. And there, so there are cattle right here, there's a hay barn, and then there's a corral right here, so you do have cattle right there that you're going to have that smell, and so you're going to have to deal with that. The other thing is, he comes down this street all the time with equipment.
Forget nothing.
So just be aware that that is a reality, that there will be equipment coming down this road constantly, every day, several times a day. So just be aware that that is a reality. So the other concerns I have is, you're looking at what you do on this street, but what about all the traffic that this is going to send down these streets? Has there been any consideration as to, and I guess this is a new street, but I think there needs to be some consideration as to what happens up here and up here, because there's going to be a lot of traffic. This is a ton of people, so you're going to divert a lot of traffic up through there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clint left a whole minute, so. Of course Nate took a little bit of extra time.
You stopped me at like all three minutes.
My name is Dave Cloward. I've lived in this city or the surrounding areas for seventy-three years. I was born and raised in Spanish Fork, and I'm the seller of this property to Fig. I sold it to him a year ago. I think it's important to understand the process that I went through in deciding who to sell it was. It wasn't based on the highest price, it was based on who I thought would do the best job and represent our community, which is what I had in mind. This development is actually in my neighborhood. That's where I live right now, is in Benjamin. And I'm interested in making sure that my neighbors don't come and slip my tires or anything afterwards, that they're happy with what goes here. I believe that we, well, let's see, there you go. I believe this is a project that we need, like many of your parents, because not many of you are my age, but you're going to have grandkids. I have sixteen grandkids, and four of them right now are of the age, they're looking for somewhere to live. Go out in this community and try and find that. You'll find that it is very, 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 very difficult and very expensive. This kind of project and product is going to provide places for my grandkids to be able to live and start out with. In my age, it was a tart, starter home, it was twelve hundred feet, single car garage, three bedrooms, one bathroom. That's what I started out with. They're going to start out with an apartment or a condo, if they're very lucky, it's going to be a townhome. It's not going to be a single-family home. So I'm, want you to know that I spent a lot of time, I've gone over and looked at their project. I hope that if you have interest, they have a project that they build out in Orem, or not in Orem, excuse me, American Fork, and it is fabulous. It's really a good project. I went all the way around the project, I went into the apartments, I went into the hallways, into the storage areas, into the garages, because I was interested in how they were going to be maintained and whether they were maintained, and I can assure you that they were, they were, and that I was happy with what I saw.
Thanks, Dave.
Hi, I'm Clint Garner. I'm a resident of Spanish Fork. I have seven kids, so I guess you could say I'm part of the problem with the housing situation in Spanish Fork. My kids are going to need somewhere to go. I can appreciate projects like this. I can appreciate farmer's standpoint as well. I grew up on a four-hundred-acre farm in Idaho. So I'm very familiar with, with farming and the challenges that come along with that. I also understand that there is a need for housing. We're in short supply in Utah, and that's actually what I do as a career, is I'm involved in housing. I actually manage a lot of properties as well, and when it was talked about CCNRs inside of HOA, those CCNRs are not just a suggestion, they are actual policies, there are fines that are associated with those, they are enforced, and it's definitely something that will help with the regulation inside of that community. I also have been following some of the, the Facebook, Facebook posts. I think there were probably a little over a hundred responses on that, probably equates to about forty people making multiple comments. So forty people in the city of Spanish Fork is a fairly small amount of, of concerns, but I'm in favor of projects like this. I can appreciate that we need housing, we need affordable places to live for our kids and future generations. I can appreciate that the fencing around there does supply a barrier for those farmers, and I'm, I'm all for farming as well. I think these farmers should have the right to be able to sell and retire with this money. And so that's, that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions?
Absolutely.
You can ask as part, and then we'll address it when everybody's done.
I'm Jordan Brown. I live in what is Leland. And I just, in light of recent other high-density things that have been approved in our area recently, I believe the projects were approved under a D rating for the traffic study that was done. So, and I know that this road is like, is a little bit different as far as the traffic, but the, the amount of units is also a lot more than what was approved with that D rating. So I'm just wondering, is that an acceptable rating for projects like this to be approved on? Or is that something that, like, I, I just don't know, is that like a normal thing that cities approve on as a D rating?
We'll write that down, yes.
Um, because, and if it is, could Spanish Fork do better? Could we maybe say, like, I think Dave mentioned, you know, we want to get this project right, so if this is something that ends up getting approved, like everything else that seems to be going in around us, let's get it right. Let's make sure that it's, if, if it can be passed at a higher level than a D traffic rating, that maybe we can, maybe that could be done?
Thank you.
Good, Jordan.
I'm Sandra Nielsen, and I live, I don't know how you work this, oh, right up there, but that's not what my comment's about. I lived in a four-story place in Linden years ago, and it was a fifty-five and older, but they did have elevators. And to move all your stuff in and up stairwells and bring your groceries in and everything, it's pretty tough when you're a little older. And I just, when they said the elevator, they didn't have it, I don't know. For me, that was hard, because you're bringing your stuff so far anyway, you're not just coming in your back door, that it's tough. And a lot of these one-bedroom places are, I believe, going to be for elderly people or young people, I guess. But, anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Great, thanks.
It just looks fun to stand here. I'm Brian Brown, I live in Leland as well. Just a couple quick thoughts. So, we, we hear that we need affordable places for people to live, like townhomes, but now townhomes behind me are now over half a million dollars. So I don't know how affordable they ever are when they're done for those people we're concerned about. The other thing is, when I was getting out of college, I never dreamed I would go live in the neighborhood where my parents lived. So to think that I have a right for my kids to live where I've worked twenty years to live, I don't know that our plan needs to be set up like that, like, oh, we have, you know, we want families to live here for a long time, but right here next door, we want really, we want renters. That, that makes sense. So I think the plan needs to be more like our way station, has a forty-year life expectancy versus a, this will be done in two years, and within two years after that, you'll have second-generation owners. And I just think that kind of turnover should fit a master plan that doesn't change. If it's a master plan, I think it's kind of disingenuous to change, to work really hard to get an R4, that's twelve units per acre, and then kind of, now it's easy to go to sixteen and twenty and twenty-four, or up to thirty, because we've already done it. So as we accept this plan, the next one's even easier, because we already gave into this one. And so I just think when we're looking at a, what we do, which, and what you do is try and make a long-term plan, I want one that's longer than two years. I, I don't want to face problems with roads, because we weren't planning on six hundred units right here on this road. We never have. The master plan never went in that, we just changed some zoning, so we'll make modifications that just fit around this project. But now we got new problems, because now all these connecting roads like Clint talked about need to be modified, and everything's a two-lane road around this, everything. So, it's just bigger problems. We're accepting higher density, which now we're accepting bigger problems. So, that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Hi, my name's Jackie Larson. My family owns Seven Bar Ranchland that is to the east of this development, where the neighborhood's within the city. We own about just over a hundred acres that's to the east and to the north. We lease another fifty acres, and my husband does contract farming on another fifty, sixty acres on top of that. So the families that have lived here for generations have dedicated their lives to a culture that residents of Spanish Fork were drawn to, and have built a community that's worth being proud of. Leland has an important history and a heritage of agriculture that, in the human element, is doing what our families have done for generations. Our families were some of the first pioneers of this area in Spanish Fork, and many of our, of our ancestors were prominent figures of the city. My husband's great-great-great-grandfather, Joseph Beck, was a superintendent of the Indian Farm Reservation here in the eighteen-fifties, and my husband's the sixth generation to be farming here, and I have no intention of farming legacy in any of my lifetime. I'm concerned with the increased traffic, safety issues, nuisance complaints, as well as reduction in the property values that will come if the zoning is approved. From what I understand, zoning changes should minimize conflict between landowners. Farms run twenty-four-seven, day-night, it never stops. Creating an island-like development surrounded by agriculture, ranches, and farms with the intention and goal of changing the character of the area seems irresponsible approach. The only thing that's guaranteed to do is create conflict, complaints, safety issues, and lawsuits. Our habitat, or, so the habitat here, our operation actually provides a unique habitat which supports several wild raptors. There are several federal and state laws that apply to this area which protect the several endangered and threatened species here from the development that may harm the species in the habitat. So, has anyone received federal approval for this activity that would adversely modify the protected species, and who is going to be responsible for the fines? I'm almost done. Water, everybody likes talking about water. So, I noticed when I was looking at the plans, that actually says that ditches are going to be removed. Does the applicant have written approval from the irrigation company to remove the ditches that are in the plans? And our wells have been affected by increases in development, and what impacts do you see that development of this size will have, not only in our wells here, but also the wells of our neighbors in Benjamin, Lake Shore, and Palmyra? And Rex actually touched on this for a second, but this area is vulnerable to quicksand. People have died here in the quicksand in the past. I don't think it's based off the history, it seems suitable, or it seems unsuitable for high-density development. So what level of certainty do you expect that the ground can physically support the building, and why encourage or allow development in land in a manner that does not ensure the safety of those who would live here? So, I mean, this proposed zone change is inconsistent with surrounding uses and threatens my family's livelihood. There's no balance, there's no transition, so I'm asking that the same considerations that are given to other... of the city. My husband's great-great-great-grandfather Joseph Beck was a superintendent of the Indian Farm Reservation here in the 1850s. And my husband's the sixth generation to be farming here and I have no intention of farming legacy in any of my lifetime. I'm concerned with the increased traffic, safety issues, nuisance complaints, as well as the reduction in the property values that will come if the zoning is approved. From what I understand, zoning changes should minimize conflict between landowners. Farms run 24/7, day/night. It never stops. Creating an island-like development surrounded by agriculture, ranches, and farms with the intention and goal of changing the character of the area seems irresponsible approach. The only thing that's guaranteed to do is create conflict, complaints, safety issues, and lawsuits. Our habitat, or, so the habitat here, our operation actually provides a unique habitat which supports several wild raptors. There are several federal and state laws that apply to this area which protect the several endangered and threatened species here from the development that may harm the species in the habitat. So, has anyone received federal approval for this activity that would adversely modify the protected species and who is going to be responsible for the fines? I'm almost done. Water. Everybody likes talking about water. So, I noticed when I was looking at the plans, that actually says that the ditches are going to be removed. Does the applicant have written approval from the irrigation company to remove the ditches that are in the plans? And our wells have been affected by increases in development and what impacts do you see that development of this size will have not only our wells here, but also the wells of our neighbors in Benjamin, Lake Shore, and Palmyra. And Rex actually touched on this for a second, but this area is vulnerable to quicksand. People have died here in the quicksand in the past. I don't think it's based off the history, it seems suitable, or it seems unsuitable for high-density development. So what level of certainty do you expect that the ground can physically support the building and why encourage or allow development in land in a manner that does not ensure the safety of those who would live here? So, I mean, this proposed zone change is inconsistent with surrounding uses and threatens my family's livelihood. There's no balance. There's no transition. So I'm asking that the same considerations that are given to other businesses and residents that ensure complementary land uses also be given to us who live and farm here. I think that inherent conflict that will come with this proposed zone change should be avoided and the zoning change should actually be denied. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we will now ask for some help from staff and from the other commissioners to answer the questions that were posed or address any concerns that were brought up at this time.
Do you want to start off with water?
Dave, would you like to, would you like to wait?
Do you want to start off with water?
I wrote them down. I'm sure you did too.
Water. I have water, traffic.
Endangered species.
Okay. Any kind of federal approvals that might be required?
Soil.
Traffic is maybe the one I'd want to start with, if that's okay. And I, we don't have Michael Clark with us tonight. He's the guy that spends the most time on our staff reviewing traffic studies that are performed. So I'd be inclined, the applicant wants to put their consultant on the spot to help address specific recommendations that came out of the traffic study that was done for this project. I think that's the best route to go.
There was a thought I had as well. Something unique to the R4 zone that's actually not in some of the other zones is that the actual residential dwelling units have to front a public road. So, it's a double-edged sword. The R4 zone in its, in itself creates more traffic flow than other zones, just by design, the way it's written. It's actually quite a, can be a burden for some developers to, to make it work. That's, that's one thought on traffic.
And is it true that the traffic study done for this project received a D rating?
Not for this project.
This is a different?
Yeah. I think the idea is-
Explain that rating because A is not necessarily good and F is, F is bad. The A was underutilized, right?
I'm not the best person to ask that of. I'm really not. I'm sorry. I certainly get the concept and I think the point being made, yeah, come on up. And maybe just the things that are the most important for those of us on staff that don't have any desire to be a traffic engineer, but a lot of times a concern comes from just the, the volume of traffic that you'd expect. And certainly with the idea that, and it happened to be Atlas Engineering, that 15 years ago helped us analyze Mill Road to see what improvements needed to be made there before the old Mill Estates development got into construction, later other developments to the north there. The idea that the roads that were kind of just organically constructed over decades out there are suitable to support the kind of development that we're talking about now, I completely agree that they're not. So with that, almost weekly, we are talking about the need for additional transportation improvements in this part of the community. It's not just for anticipated growth, although that's really where the focus is placed on what improvements are going to be made, you know, next year and the year after that and that type of a thing. That, that is the impetus for construction. But that particular arrangement where development is encroaching upon areas that previously were parts of unincorporated Utah County, where it's county roads, where you'll have a parcel develop and you'll have gaps and things like that that result from areas where roads are fully constructed, going back to areas where roads are, are not fully constructed. We've had this conversation in this forum for a really long time about just the fact that sometimes things get worse before they get better. Mr. Harris pointing out the likelihood that people going from this project won't just hop conveniently on a state highway to the south and get on an interstate to the north, or sorry, to the west. And, you know, therefore, we as Spanish Fork City don't have to worry about local traffic on our streets and that kind of thing. Doubtless part of the thing that I think has made this a suitable site for this kind of, you know, land use intensity is its proximity to big transportation facilities like those. But we know that there will be needed improvements to the north, needed improvements to the east. I might have misspoke a minute ago talking about people going west I-15, but those come incrementally over time and sometimes things do get worse before they get better. And that's where level of service really comes into play. Delays at intersections, different things like that. Those do impact safety. Drivers get impatient while they sit at intersections. They do things that you might not otherwise do that become more dangerous. The thing that's the biggest concern for me, taking a long time to get to it, is that volume doesn't matter for people entering and exiting the state highway to the south. With the differentials you have and people that go 60 miles an hour on that road and the conflict that comes with left-hand turn movements and that type of a thing, I, just any additional trips where you don't have suitably designed intersections create the potential for a catastrophic accident, you know, not just a delay or something like that. So that's why we have, I think, been very particular in our conversations with the applicant about making sure that traffic from this project either gets routed relative to the road to the south at least, to an intersection that's constructed to limit movements to where you don't have that, that most significant conflict with people crossing travel lanes, where there's such a dramatic difference in speed, or they're directed to signalized intersections. So back to the point I made about the phasing plan, that's, that's a big deal for us.
And there'll be two, two stoplights put, two traffic lights put in that area?
There will. There's one existing, right, so-
There's one there already.
And proper lane.
Deceleration lanes, acceleration lanes and that kind of thing. That took longer than I wanted it to, but-
The right-in, right-out's a good idea right there as well.
Yeah. In terms of, like, you've got level of service stuff and things like that, right?
Yeah.
Dave's a pretty good traffic engineer. I'm not. We hired Jeremy Searle, who was with Wall Group that did all of the studies on here. And I'm going to start with Jordan because I'm in the hot seat. These are my neighbors, not just neighbors, but ones I actually like, so. Thanks for bringing up Mill Road, boys. Yeah. So Mill Road, let's go back in history a little bit because I know how much they love that. But I just want to point out on there, that was a really tight corridor and they worked to look at the big picture in the future. And where Dave says it gets worse before it gets better, we're kind of at worst right now because there's pinch points on there and we need more traffic. And that'll come with development. Developers pay for roads. Cities, over the vast majority of times, don't have money to pay for those. It's, it's put on the new developer. So, the traffic study, real quick, so the level D service that you talked about, Jordan, isn't acceptable. Sometimes it's inevitable, but-
You said it is acceptable?
It's not. But it's, sometimes it's inevitable, right? There's-
The best that can-
Right. It's the best you can do. So, back to this project, we had a study done with, where they project traffic out for 30 years with growth. And then what they ask is that this project builds it to a safe and suitable level of service for today, when it gets built. Everything looked good on it except for this right here. There's a standard Elkridge Parkway, which is Lofer Parkway now, that's coming clear from Elkridge and is going to be a major carrier of traffic all the way up along, it's going to drain all of Salem and Elkridge and Woodland Hills, is coming in right here. And there'll be a new signal right there. UDOT has strict standards on, this is called a limited access highway. And the spacing, with the Revere already having one here, the spacing required that we could not put one in here because this one is already planned. So we were stuck. So the city and the applicant went to UDOT and over several meetings worked out an agreement to get a waiver for that because the points that you, that live there are bringing up are valid. It's dangerous already to make a left turn on SL-164. And people get impatient and get in wrecks, or they go too fast. And so we've got the okay for the signal and the city, which I agree with, has mandated that goes in, not just with this phase, it's the first phase. So it doesn't matter which side goes in, that signal's coming in with the first phase.
Two thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. So within, so the other thing that, you made good points, this is an updated one that shows the island right there. So if you're coming down here, it's posted at 55 right now and people exceed that, we know, right? The, the safety feature they're talking about, the deceleration lane, you're able to pull out of traffic, then slow down and get out. And as you come onto this road, you can accelerate through traffic, but there's no lefts, which creates those additional conflicts, which is where the wrecks happen. If you want to go left here, you've got to come out and go to the light or go to this light. And then, as we know, traffic signals create gaps in traffic, not only for, you know, they'll create gaps here that are signalized and mandated by the signal, they also create gaps up and down the line because they're in queues, which helps to make other intersections safer as people are merging. So. There's a couple other traffic issues. The, the roads in here, these are local roads and those are the two-lane roads. And they've also, by design, they're not straight through. This is a traffic calming function to swerve the roads and also the roundabout because it restricts your speed. These roads that go through follow a grid plan that we actually heard about with that mag is planned that create traffic flow. And so, Dave had a good point I was going to bring up, I forgot your name, I'm sorry, that lives right north. You're right. You know, the, I would say the vast majority of these trips are going to come out here or out here, but we certainly understand there's people that are going to take the backroads and go into town. That, that'll just happen. People that, if you've got five minutes, I'd rather drive through the fields. So, that will happen. And that'll, those roads are planned big enough, but unfortunately, we'll be in a state of, it might get a little worse until it gets better. And that's unfortunate just because of the funding mechanism that we have with roads.
The road won't connect at this time though, right? So for now, all of this forced out to 8,000.
Yeah, but this road does go through.
That road does go through.
But these are dead ends, yeah.
Is the road going to be widened?
Yes. These are commercial collectors. A regular road is 60 feet wide. These will be 80. They'll be three-lane roads. So they'll have that center turn lane that you can pull into to slow down if you're making turn movements, which there are very few turn movements on this road because there's only three accesses.
Are we going to widen that road when you've got houses that were just built there? That they're from, you know, I don't know how you widen a road when you've got houses that come right up to the road.
Well, we won't up here.
Okay, it's just now it's busy.
Yeah, that's the, that's the gets worse till it gets better thing. Because, like Mill Road, right? We've, we've widened out where we could. Some places it's wider, some places it's narrower. When it's all done, that'll be, Mill Road will be a, what's the classification? It's a minor arterial, which is like 108 foot when it's done.
So with 1700, that road's going to be widened as well?
Correct. This road and the ditch, I'll bring up the ditch thing. We have worked with irrigation company. The only ditches that'll be removed are the service laterals for the Cloward property. And if it was in, into the ringless block, we, by law have to convey water from point A to point B and maintain flows. So these will be pipe.
Do you know how big the pipe will be?
This one right here is 30 inch.
And then on the road widening on 1700, is that going to be widened to your end?
Only to our side, not to yours, right?
So the one, Lake's house, that's the area you're taking out of, so are you just going to go straight up to where your property line is and that's only part that's going to widen?
Right.
Scott, you're very qualified to talk about soils report also. Do you have any or not?
I, well, I can address it.
Are the buildings going to fall 20 feet into the earth?
Have we found any unsuitable soil?
Yeah, the, well, there, there are sandy soils, high groundwater, and so you do a liquefaction study and then you do, you do mediation for the building structure to account for that. But you're, you're correct. It's, it's not the best place to build. We'd like good, hard bedrock at four and a half feet would be perfect.
Farm ground, I'm not sure.
Yeah. What? Yeah, and we've-
And so with the pool though, so with the buildings, how are you going to put a pool, quicksand?
Well, the, a lot of this, the water table will be lowered when you put, well, first of all, I've dealt with this with pools. They have a hydro valve in that controls the water pressure. I've worked on a project in Logan that has high groundwater. I can explain that to you without getting too nerdy, but you can put a pool, they do them all over in Florida and those kind of states with high groundwater. The buildings do need more engineering and that'll be accounted for. I'm not a soils engineer, so we hired a soils engineer that did that and then he did an additional liquefaction study which addresses the sand and water tables. So there will be an additional expense in the footings of these to account for that. Because it has to meet a seismic code for the, I think we're a seismic Zone 3 in Spanish Fork. But there's a specialist that did all that work. We hired them as a subconsultant.
Where does the water, our water sewer, I think, extend other, over there? Where's the water and the gas coming from?
The gas, we haven't got a design yet. We'll go to them as soon as we get approval. They won't work on the design until we have, till we get it to a certain point. But the water is being brought down to the lift station. So the sewer and the water will come from there up. The water's also going to need the loop because we have so many units on a single loop and so it'll go clear up here and tie in up on, is that ninth, where the existing water is up there. I think it's, there's a gentleman that built the house and he brought the eight part of the way down here. We'll tie to that line right there to create a loop.
The water?
Yes, for the water.
So you might be talking 2,000.
Here.
2,000, that's where they brought the water in.
Right. This is where the water loops. The PI actually has to go clear back up into Mill Road. So where's the gentleman that built the house? Is it right there? These street names are confusing. It's 2,000 here, about 14.
Well, yeah, so you gotta count me in.
Can you turn on the, oh, you do have the water on.
So it's right up?
Scroll up a little more. Right there. That's where we'll tie to the water.
That's ours.
Yeah. Okay. So we appreciate that. You brought the, you had to bring that down for your house.
How, do, is there a study about how wells are affected by water?
No, I-
I don't, you know, this is all surface. If you've got a surface well, it could be affected, but your culinary wells are much deeper, you know?
We have three right there. One by the title and two that are just self-insilous. And three days after the irrigation gets turned on, are most upholding.
And that has to do with other, other things other than just digging in the, in the dirt.
So will this impact by more, adding more development, adding more people when we're already in a drought, won't affect our water?
I can't, no one can guarantee anything like that, but I have a property in Palmyra that has the same issues with different people. And when you built and drilled your well, it affected my well and I affected Rex's well. And, you know, everybody's is in it, is, is affecting one another's when you go into the same aquifer. But the aquifer that we're in is, is much deeper than what we're talking about here.
But the water that will serve any development on here is not coming from close proximity?
It is, no. If, if there's a well that's being used for culinary water, it's a surface well, it's an illegal well. It has to be down deeper. And the, about, you know, you're in about 190 to 230 feet deep on most wells in the area.
Spanish Fork Canyon is where most of the city's-
The aquifer comes down through you and, and it disperses through the whole valley.
And then with the piping of the ditch, is that going to slow down our stream?
It shouldn't. No, that's what we, we have to go through a process. France and Engineering approves our design to make sure you're getting the same streams- France and engineering approves our design to make sure you're getting the same streams through that pipe.
With Southfield.
Yeah, Southfield's the irrigation company.
Field Irrigation will, will have to approve that.
And it's a small amount of pipe, but technically you should get a little more with the seepage and evaporation goes away in a pipe, but it's minimal here.
Okay. Maybe we can move forward with some of the other things that are here that haven't been touched on.
My other question, Dave, one of them is, is this a designated protected habitat for wild raptors?
I'm not aware of anything like that. Um, the only approvals that I've been involved with that are like at the state or federal level would have to do with wetlands. Where you work with the U S Army Corps of Engineers or redevelopment projects where maybe there's an environmental issue, like a brownfields kind of a thing, where you work with the EPA. Um, Vaughn, I don't know if you.
Mine is not approved, having that. But it is a species that doesn't allow you to take or capture an animal, a protected or listed animal. As long as they're not doing that, that's fine.
Well, tape would be constituted if they're even removed from there. So there's enough that exists that they no longer are roosting there?
But I don't think this is a listed protected habitat.
They've been documented by more than just us of being like roosting in our trees in our silo. When you have golden eagles and ball eagles that come back year after year after year, and then all of a sudden they don't come back, who's going to be liable to pay you a half million dollar fine per eagle when I call the fishing aid?
If you can prove that somebody took the animal, then you, then yeah, it could be liable.
But how would they prove it? Would the developer have to send it back to the city? And then would it go back and forth with that?
The city won't be liable.
You'd have to prove it. Okay, uh, we've talked about, uh.
Oh, we had somebody send us an email about culinary water for so many units and how that's, and, uh, wondering about the, how that impacts the, our Utah water drought. Do you have a response for that?
I have some expertise in the area of irrigation and water. And Spanish Fork City is one of the leaders, if not the leader in the state, of acquiring water and water rights to serve their population. They've got a lot of different sources of water. Uh, the first sources that they had were, uh, were from springs near the mouth of the canyon. Mount, uh, Murdoch, or the Malcolm Springs and then later Cold Springs. And eventually, uh, they also tapped into Crab Springs that's up in the Bird's Eye area. All three of those are their main sources of, of drinking water. They also have a number of wells that they can also use, but the wells aren't as high a quality of water. And Spanish Fork City, in an effort to try and alleviate some of the pressure off of our wells west of Spanish Fork, have tried not to pump their wells any more than absolutely necessary. They also have, uh, have taken water on ground that is developed. Uh, and that was irrigation water. Most of it is strawberry water or canal company water, like the Southfield water. Uh, Spanish Fork City is an appropriator on the Spanish Fork River and has a Spanish Fork River right that they also have. Uh, they forced, they were able to foresee the growth of Spanish Fork City and they, they have entered into a contract with Central Utah Water Conservancy District to receive ten thousand acre feet of water annually, uh, from the C U P project, which is fed from Strawberry Reservoir. Strawberry Reservoir, uh, receives water from several different sources, including the UNDA's that comes down into it. And Strawberry Reservoir is one of those reservoirs that has escaped some of the drought conditions. Right now they're at seventy-six percent of normal. Uh, it's a reservoir that holds a million, one hundred thousand acre feet of water. And today they're, they have more than eight hundred thousand acre feet in storage in that reservoir. Uh, they are constructing a pipe at this time that will go all the way out to Genola and provide more water to the cities. And that's where, uh, Spanish Fork will receive their ten thousand acre feet as they need that. It's expensive water, but it's water that can be utilized to supply irrigation water. And that means the water on your outside lawns and gardens, trees, stuff like that. So Spanish Fork City is in better than average shape. Just for your information, an acre foot of water is, uh, three hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons. And, uh, an average home with a quarter acre lot, it's widely accepted from studies done by Utah State University that it takes one and a half acre feet per home if you have a quarter acre lot. You use about a half an acre foot inside for, in a, in a year. And then if you have a quarter of an acre that you water, uh, the university has determined that it takes four acre feet per acre. So one acre, one acre, one quarter of one acre will take one acre foot of water to water grass. Uh, generally we don't use nearly that much on our lots, but that's what can be used. So that's where the one and a half acre foot per, per home is derived. When you begin to have projects like this where you build on top of each other, you don't have the acreage to be water that you did before. Uh, the buildings take up space, all of the hard surfaces take up space. And so we end up with a lot less use. There'll be, uh, there'll be grass and some sod. But you saw there's a lot of zere escaping in this particular project. And so these projects actually take less water than if we were spreading them out. If you took, uh, you know, seven hundred home, let's see, how many units is it? So if we, if we spread the, uh, out over acreage, you know, it would be hundreds of acres instead of the acreage that's involved here. And so these kinds of projects actually are good for conservation of water. And they're encouraged by the state and by water managers. Uh, doesn't mean that they're right for everywhere, that these places are right for everywhere. I think I mentioned before in some other meetings that if we went around the room and asked where you, where you first lived, when you first got married, it'd probably be a little small place in a basement or a crappy little place, you know, that you lived until you could afford to get into the next place and the next place, until you find the place that you wanted. And once you've got your place, then that's what you have worked for all your life. And, uh, to say that, uh, you know, the, the people who utilize these kinds of spaces will live in them all their lives, it's probably not true, especially those that are rental units. I'm, like was, was talked about, that I have grandkids now that are looking for places to live and they can't afford to live in a house that goes about almost six hundred thousand dollars to build a house now in Spanish Fork. So they got to have someplace. And the water issue comes down to the type of building, the type of, uh, of construction, the type of landscaping, and how many units per acre you can use. Uh, it was mentioned, I'm going to, I'm going to hit this while I'm talking to, his, it was mentioned that, uh, there are some places that we have, uh, higher density housing right now down in the area southwest of here. Uh, some of them are in Pace and some of them are actually in Salem. But they're down by the new Salem treat, water treatment plant down there. And, uh, you know, you can go down there and take a look at those that are down there. There are some four-story and some three-story and some, uh, single-family unit, units that are down there. They've done a pretty good job of, uh, moving those around. But, uh, you can take a look at how those, they're not very appealing to me, but it's all, uh, depending on, you know, how you look at those. Everybody needs a place. And so I appreciate that they are providing some, some, uh, one-bedroom units that might be good for, you know, a new family or one that's, uh, just starting. Two-bedroom units that are for a little bit bigger and then a few three-bedroom units. Uh, and so that was touched upon. As we go down through here, there's a couple of other things. I think that we've hit the intersections, uh, the travel. One thing that's going to have to, that this development is going to have to, if it's built and will have to, uh, contend with, and they, they don't have a choice, is cattle smells. The farm is what it is and that won't be taken away from anybody. And they'll just have to be a neighbor like anybody else would. And so those kinds of things, you know, uh, you're there and, uh, you won't be forced out at any, at any point. Uh, there was some, uh, the concern about the traffic is definitely warranted, but, you know, the places that we've looked at, having the highway that we do on the south is one of the best things that we've seen in, in higher density developments. A lot of times we end up out in the middle of, uh, somewhere where there aren't very many roads at all, if any. And so people are driving a long ways to get to a road like that one. And, uh, and that is a, a good road that way. No elevators was mentioned, uh, by Sandra and, uh, to tell you the truth, uh, there's only a couple of us in here that are around my age. And I can tell you that four stories isn't very appealing to me either. But from the people that I have talked to, the first units that'll be rented in these apartments will be the very top of units. The third and fourth stories.
Liquification.
Liqui, that's right. You might be on the ground level by the time that, that you retire. That's a, a good point. Uh, uh, maybe someone else is better than me. Uh, Joseph, maybe you can address the cost or, uh, uh, the effect that we may have on property values. With, with a development like this?
Yeah, they're going, if, if the zoning goes through, my personal opinion, which none of you are allowed to hold me to, and it's not the opinion of the government, but, uh, a zone change from agricultural to some sort of high density is going to increase the, the value of the land exponentially. This is the opposite of a value grab from the land itself.
Okay. Is there anything we missed, you guys?
I had a couple questions, gentlemen. Um, uh, Chris Ursh brought up earlier that we had that minimum square footage for one bedrooms. Has anybody looked that up?
I did, they got it.
They got it?
Yeah.
So I'll make a check.
They got it. I looked it up, yeah. Yeah, and they didn't include the balcony, so they, they got it. And they also have the overall average, which is nine sixty there, like nine sixty-two, nine sixty-three.
I saw that they got the average, but I might have looked at my whole presentation. They were just under, they were just on the one bedrooms. I saw in their, in his data sheet. Alkalis, if they had, I thought it was a fifty-one square foot balcony that'd be there.
Got it.
It was, there were, it was like seven.
Regardless, they'd have to comply with the code.
Thank you, and it was close enough that I was just going to make sure that they had a balcony that was big. If, if that need was the issue, then.
Another comment was, um, garages being used, uh, being rented out. I'm wondering, we've talked about in separate work sessions, not tonight, about requiring these garages to be used for parking vehicles and not for storage. Uh, has the outcome?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Rules or, uh, conditions in place so they'll be used actually for parking and not for just as storage units?
One hundred percent agree with you. We want for parking, not storage.
And can that be put in regulations?
You can do it two ways. You could add it to H O A regulations. You could also put it in C C N Rs. And C C N Rs are recorded against the property. That's a, it's, it has more teeth, in my opinion, than H O A regulations.
And I, I, the largest part of the project is going to have a professional management company that the apartments, which other projects that we've looked at that have garages where parking is an issue, that's where it comes from, you know, the regulation of the management.
I have one more question. I had a, what I asked actually I don't think was answered about the purpose of zoning. Is it supposed to?
I had to come up to the.
So, uh, my other question that I asked earlier with the purpose of zoning, um, isn't that supposed to kind of help with surrounding land uses to be more compatible and avoid potential conflict or inevitable conflict in the situation?
Thanks for the question. Dave or Joseph, would you like?
This is kind of one of the things I always think about, so I appreciate you bringing it up. When, when I analyze something, I think government's job first and foremost, like the primary reason that anyone even wants a government in the first place, is at least in our country's history, is to protect property rights. But you have to look at it as the property right of the person who wants to do something with their property. And you have to look at the property rights of the future occupants of that land in this case. And you have to look at the property rights of the neighbors that exist now and that will exist in the future. So it's, it's a total balancing and juxtaposition about what is the proposal in front of you and how will it affect the neighbors? And how will the neighbors affect the residents, the future residents? Cause it goes both ways. And my opinion is that through the city staff going through great lengths with this, um, property owner, by the way, this process is over a year, I think, or about a year, of so many iterations of their proposal. The density used to be hot, it used to be much more. They didn't used to have all of their buildings on public roads. Their, the landscaping used to be less, they didn't have all the amenities. They have gone through so much to get to the point where what I'm seeing now, my opinion is, it's a great location, but the, the development itself is built out in a way that it has the least effect on the neighbors. It also, the neighbors may have more effect on them. It's going to be a combination of the two. That's my opinion. There was a comment about buildings and shade. The building footprints themselves are, are, are far enough away and there's actually streets in between, in most cases in between the buildings and the neighboring properties as well. I, I think Rex, you brought that up.
Right.
So, I'm sorry, but like, so the purpose of zoning is just to do what looks good in a spot?
Zoning, zoning defines what your pro, what property rights are, in my opinion. It defines the property rights of any given land.
And I might add that property owners have the right to petition to have that zoning changed. This, this property is zoned rural residential.
And that's what a spot is?
And that's, that's what it is. And, uh, the property owner who owns that ground has the right to request that that zoning be changed. You know, the. Go ahead.
Out of myself. Um, I'm hearing the concerns, just the conflict that happens between what's going on there today and what ends up resulting from this property being developed and how zoning plays into that. Is that a fair?
Um, yeah, essentially when the lawsuits come, cause they're going to, and with us being as large as we are surrounding them, it's inevitable.
So zoning, in terms of minimizing that conflict, I don't think necessarily zoning is the tool that we try to use to do that. Um, I, I'm trying to say this in a way that's going to come across as genuine. Yeah, obviously this will have an impact on this part of the community. Visually, you know, in every way, right out of the chute, this is a huge change or would be if it happens. Um, that being said, I, to a person, I think everybody on our city council absolutely wants people to continue to farm and to do the things they're doing now for as long as they want to. So really, we try to get more into the nuts and bolts of that when we have a development proposal in front of us. Um, with what we're talking about tonight, you know, oftentimes it's something as simple as fencing. Um, if we, um, and I think this incidentally is very appropriate and perhaps important. Um, if there is a concern about somebody, uh, challenging maybe a farmer's right to do what they would do around the property and that type of a thing. If we need to look into, um, opportunities to put right to farm types of provisions in place, so this would be different even from an ag protection area. But, um, to provide some protections that are more than just like a feel-good sign to put somebody on notice, but actually, uh, things. but actually things that can have real legal protection from nuisance lawsuits and that type of a thing. We've talked with the city council a little bit about that. And I can see where this might be, you know, a good impetus for the city to do a deep dive on that. I don't know if I can, it's fine.
We've never gotten quite to the degree of employing that kind of thing here.
I don't think we want that. That would be...
But again, it's more just a matter of trying to make sure that fences get constructed. In some cases, it's walls, like we talked about, and that type of a thing. Or otherwise making sure that a site's designed in such a way that it doesn't cause a problem for people maybe to be able to access their property or those things.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other issues that we missed?
Probably the one that's gonna be most affected if this goes through. Anybody that's flood irrigated knows how hard it is to judge how much water you're putting on your fields. And if this goes through, I'll be down, which is fine. I've got a new life now, I'm ready to move on. I don't think my kids are gonna approve of it, but that's not their decision. So I am against it, but for that reason, I won't be able to function anymore. I won't be able to irrigate.
Okay.
But I'll really have some problems, so I'm toast. And I don't know what the city plans on business districts, but we all have to go up to the northeast part of Shaw. And there's nothing in our way, no matter how far west Spanish Fork City limits is gonna go, but you're gonna have to create a business district somewhere out there, I think. Or let Salem have it, or whatever.
We, you know, the city doesn't control who wants to buy the property and what they want to do with it. The way that the master plan looks now is that all four sides of the Benjamin exit are anticipated to be commercial use. And so whether that would include a grocery store or whatever, you know, that would depend on the people who want to do that.
We've downplayed the commercial aspect of what is proposed tonight, but the zone change is to R4 and C2.
And C2?
We don't have a specific development proposal today for what would be the commercial zone parts of the development. Their size such with enough depth in particular to be able to accommodate a number of different things. And that is because it has always been believed, not only is there gonna be a need, but this is the right place for commercial uses. And we think that just from a functionality standpoint, somebody could build something there and make it work, so.
And I think that's the hard part when you're coming into a new area, right? You have the general plan and people are, and property owners are like, how dare you? How dare you general plan my beloved area? And how dare you say there's gonna be commercial on that side? And then, and then mixed use, and then higher density in my beloved area? The good thing is, is that you do not have to sell, and you can keep doing your thing on your land for as long as you own your land, absolutely. And the hard part is to say the reality is that there's gonna continue to be developers that will come and talk to you all about selling your land. And you have to decide if and when you want to develop. But it's the city's role to say if and when this is sold to developers. Smart city planning is to put high-density by an interchange with commercial so that a city can have a place, you know, we can have a place to go shop, and we can also put high-density where there's high traffic flow. And then you got lower and lower density as you fan out from that area. And so, and so Mr. Cloward was approached and sold his property, and he vetted the people coming to buy. And you have this perspective of we need some places that are higher-density areas. And it's super important for the city, city staff and Planning Commission and City Council that for, to have a high-density development like this come into the city, that it go into the right place. And as a side note, let me say, I guess, I'm guessing that Payson has, Payson and Salem have a plan, have general plans, and those weird townhomes that are in the middle of the fields are part of a general plan that, that is probably smarter development when it develops out, but it looks weird now. And so, uh, no, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, so as that, so anyway, Mr. Cloward's like, okay, we want as a city to have, if we have, we've approved this zone, it's allowed in our city, this is the area that seems like it makes sense. We want to have an A number one, home run, well-designed, high-density development. And, and so, so Mr. Brown, let me assure you that this was, this has been carefully and thoroughly vetted. I mean, these guys probably feel like they've been raked over the coals because it matters so much to us. And so we know that there are trade-offs, but we don't feel like we're trading out, like we've asked and, and really thought and discussed, and also gone to our general plan, so.
And since you addressed me, I'll address you back. So my worry and that concern wasn't necessarily that this wasn't thought out, but all the future that goes out, I mean, those colors change, we know, because this is the first one of this density put in. So I'm thinking, okay, let's go, let's raise it up now, because we can do that. So at any time we've moved it, we've moved because someone else has wanted it moved. So we changed the definition, we keep it R4, but we changed, so my thought was more of the precedent that all this continues to set. Not necessarily that unit doesn't fit or doesn't feel good, but the next unit or five units down, it's just gonna, I don't see the trend changing.
Right, well, that, we, we try to stay with our, we stay with our general plan, and we have to have a really good reason to change general plan and zoning, so, anyway.
And I think I understand what you're saying is that it seems that density always goes up and doesn't go down. But stranger things have happened, I don't know where, but.
We don't want to end up, we don't want to end up.
Well, you know, yeah.
And that's why we have to have smart general planning.
Yeah, and you know, my mother was born not far from you guys in Leland, and my grandfather worked at the Sugar Factory, which hasn't run since. We were all very small kids. You've got development coming in from the east right now, it's coming that way. This wasn't proposed in one of those places. It's been proposed in a place that is, you know, it is in a place where this kind of density was imagined when this was, this map was done. And so that's the reason that they're asking for that zone change and want to build this. Anything else that we should discuss that we have not? I think we've got it all? If there, is there any more discussion before we?
I'd like to talk about whether or not this fine gentleman over here is really not gonna be able to water his fields anymore, because that, that should not happen.
Without a lot of work.
Water is because of the slope of your property going up.
That's right, it is, the ground is, has been prepared so that the water runs that way. And it happens every...
That's the lay of the land.
Every...
Is this development causing that?
I think Mr. Peterson can help with that.
But there might be a way that we can help.
Right, right, because I agree, we don't want to do that. Can you show me where your property is?
Just north of this. It's just north of this.
Over there.
Over here, excuse me.
Just off twelve hundred west, yeah.
Here?
So are you flooding these? Is that your?
I flood just to the west of it.
This?
No, no, go, go to the east, right, whoa.
Right there.
Whoa.
Just wanted to gain confidence with you.
We could burmit.
About eighteen acres, around there.
Right, so your tailwater's coming down here?
Yeah.
And you're saying you're giving reliable flooding to your property?
Yeah.
Can we?
This road would help.
Well, the road there, and then we need to give him a place for it to go, right?
Right.
And so the, the main ditch goes here, don't you have a ditch? Does that ditch come across here at the headgate?
We're taking it out.
The ditch is actually on the other side.
The ditch runs down fourteen hundred.
The ditch is over there. So where do you, what ditch do you pull water out of?
The ditch is on the east side.
Ditch goes across here for this part, and the ditch comes across here for this part.
Okay, so.
The main, the main canal or ditch is right here.
Right.
Okay, so there's gonna be a storm drain system in here that ties into this existing ditch in the right-of-way and then goes with the historic flow? So be happy to come talk to you about getting the tailwater drain that ties that back, because I think it's close enough to do it, and we'll spend Garrett's money to do it.
Garrett, you willing to do that?
So you're gonna have to spend Garrett's money and then go onto our property though? To get, I mean, not that I don't want to help Lake at my own needs, but...
Well, that's a, there's, right there in the right-of-way, there's a ditch. We'll, we'll stay off yours, but that's the historic drain, right?
Right.
The one through Waldson's and then the one up by that, spinning that cuts across.
What's it, what's your name, sir?
Blake Nielsen.
Thank, okay, thank you.
So I'll come visit you.
All of that, all of that property that borders that.
It's going to have that same issue.
Potential challenge, I mean.
All of this to here? So the ditch, the headgate I'm thinking about is right here, right, Rex? That ditch comes, but doesn't that ditch feed this? Or does that, doesn't that one irrigate south?
It does irrigate south.
Yeah, the, the headgate's here, ditch comes across to water this, but you've got a ditch here that waters all of this, the same thing we were talking about. It's, and same with this field, this is Ryan Creer's here, and so.
So that one, well, we're not covering Kirk Christiansen's, right?
No.
But we already hit that one to the right. So that one, I'll have, that one's a little more complicated, but we do have a pipe coming all the way up through there. And the way we, it would be with the city, because we can put, it's a future storm drain, and it's oversized for all the future.
So is this coming down here, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we could use that extra capacity as a tailwater, then when we develop, do a transition to a storm drain. So if I'm not speaking out of line, make that a condition, because I think we can address that.
Sean, you mentioned percentage of owner occupied versus for rent.
Right.
Was there a percentage you had in mind?
More than fifty percent, fifty-plus percent.
Owner occupied or no more than fifty, well, either way, it's fifty-fifty, you're saying?
Owner occupied, fifty-plus percent.
No less than fifty percent?
No less.
Right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
This is scary.
I have some notes. I have notes, but I could give it a go, but you can too.
No, I, I don't have the notes.
Sure? No, okay. Just some anecdotal thoughts, forty thousand-foot level. I, I like the general plan, I agree with the general plan, and for a lot of reasons, my vote is gonna be consistent with the general plan, and there's a lot of other reasons as well. But I move that the Planning Commission recommends the Modera subdivision zone change and preliminary plat approval request, recommends approval to City Council, contingent upon compliance with staff's findings and conditions with the following variations to four and five, that the development agreement, whether or not there is one, and if there is one, what it contains, is subject to staff's discretion. Also that the developer has to, has to, in their HOA regulations as well as CCNRs, require that garages are used for vehicles, and that in the condominium portion, there, there shall never be less than fifty percent owner occupied of the overall develop, of the overall development in the for-sale portion of the project. Central access. Make, say it, I can add it to my motion if I like it.
Do you want to add central access?
I want to add, I do. Say that, I'll add it. Yes, we add that, and then another, another item is that the developer has to, along its northern boundary, provide for water flow in a way that, that allows the neighbors to still do what they do now and not incur additional costs.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for being here and for expressing your concerns, and hopefully we can coexist and, and make the best of the situation. We don't wish to make anything worse for anybody.
I just understood your...
And maybe, maybe Lynn Ray's might even get more business if you get all these guys to come to your corn maze. Serious if you had that happen? Hey, I'm sorry.
Of course, if they move there, they're criminals. I can't even stand that, I'm telling you. Lady say before we get a vandalized property? Right, because they're all criminals.
And I can, I commiserate. It is, thank you. Okay.
We need a gavel.
Yeah, we do. All right, next item on the agenda. Let me get back here to where I was. Got too many papers.
That's great. Oh, thanks.
Yes. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the thirty-four hundred east annexation. And Dave, we'll let you go ahead and explain this proposal.
It's great to have an easy one. The proposed annexation area is north of some properties that the commission has talked to Fieldstone Homes about within the last eighteen or so months. Fieldstone's project is north of what we call Quiet Valley, which D.R. Horton has purchased, and they're developing. That area is adjacent to a set of railroad tracks and US Highway eighty-nine, in pretty close proximity to the mouth of Spanish Fork Canyon. Everybody know what they're talking about area-wise?
No.
No? Okay, so this is as far, almost as far east in Spanish Fork as you can get. So this is Mapleton. Today, this is Spanish Fork. Maple Mountain High School is, let's say, right about there.
Okay.
And, hey, there we go.
That's a little easier, too.
So we're talking, so this is, this is the rail crossing to the south here. There aren't a lot of other landmarks or points of reference. You know, Maple Mountain High School about there. Yeah, there we go.
So we, those that live close to it call that the cut-through road.
Yep, bingo.
There you go.
Are the landowners the applicants, or is the city the applicant?
The landowners are, but we've helped with it, so, um.
But all the landowners are in favor of this?
Correct.
Okay.
And I may get some of these details wrong, but the, the real reason for the annexation is that, um, there is a ditch that conveyed water to the south to, uh, a number of different properties, including, um, the property that D.R. Horton's developing and where Fieldstone wants to develop, and, um, it made good sense with the development of those properties to abandon that ditch and to instead, uh, deliver pressurized irrigation water to the area. Uh, the abandonment of that ditch impacts these properties, and arrangements were made to serve them with city utilities. In order to follow through with that, they need to be annexed. So I might be missing something about some of the motivation.
If we don't annex it, the city's gonna be not complying with their, what they said.
I think that would contradict the arrangement that we have.
I don't intend on doing that, I'm just curious.
Is it the developer paying for the, the pressurized irrigation only until it's getting to them?
Yeah.
Because it was, they're the ones cutting off the water supply.
How big is that swath?
All together, just under 26 acres. Okay. Four properties, I think there are three homes on the properties.
How many landowners did you just say?
Four.
But one is very small, right?
Uh, I am thinking they're all similar.
Maybe they're all about the same. I guess.
You know, I think you can see from.
Oh, yeah, that one goes all the way back to, so they're about the same.
Do you want a motion now?
That's what I was gonna say. Are we recommending or approving?
I move that we approve the 3400 East Annexation.
Recommend.
Recommend. Is there anything else we really needed to say? Okay.
She, she needs a second.
Second.
Okay.
Maybe, I'm sorry, just add that.
All those in favor?
Is that to be annexed with rural residential zone?
With rural, okay.
Start over.
Okay. I recommend that, uh, let's see, I, whatever the words. I move that we recommend the annexation of the 3400 East Annexation with, uh, be approved with the rural residential zoning based on the findings and conditions.
Recommend it for approval.
Recommend it for approval.
Yes. Very.
With coaching. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Number eight on our agenda, the general plan amendment, and this is a public hearing. How many of you guys are public?
Is this general plan amendment or general, is there a difference between?
You have the speed element.
This is the transportation master plan.
Yeah, I.
Then it's right at the back.
This isn't pressing, and where we don't really have anybody on staff that's totally at the speed on exactly what this is, I'm gonna ask that you continue it, if that's okay?
Oh dang, we can't discuss it for an hour?
Do you need a motion to continue it?
Honestly.
Let's, let's have a motion to continue.
I move to continue agenda item number eight.
Second.
So, actually, we'd have to notice it again for the city council hearing.
Oh.
Yes.
Just a procedural note, just a notice for a public hearing. If you open and hold this public hearing and close it.
And continue it.
Then they can, then you can continue the decision.
I like that.
That's what we noticed.
Great idea.
Because we're probably not gonna get any more participation.
It's nice to have the city attorney here.
Thank you, Ms. So, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on the public transportation, uh, proposed tran, uh, the proposed, uh, transportation, uh, how do we word that? Go back to what it was. The master plan concerning master tra, transportation. Uh, we'll open that public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make their voice heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now.
I move to continue agenda item number eight, general plan amendment, until future planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
A second then.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So that is continued. Yeah, no.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
This is record.
Thanks, guys.